So at this point, I would like to call the order. The Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting or a special meeting of May 31st, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu.malabucity.org/virtualmeeting. At the screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute for each speaker that defers time, for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show the slide? There we have Raise Your Hand on the right and instructions on the left and then what to do on the right. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand or I will call you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May, I have a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Jennings. Commissioner Mazza. Commissioner Wetton. Vice Chair Smith. And Chair Hill will be absent this evening.
Commissioner, I'm in chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Quick question, no item with public comment or commissioner comment or staff comment tonight, correct?
Might we, no, that's, I'm sorry, nevermind. No, we don't have any of the public comment tonight because it's a special meeting.
Yeah, I move we approve the agenda as staff recommends.
Okay, great. Roll call.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
You have, the motion carries.
Okay, so since we have a special meeting and we don't have any ceremonial presentations of any sort tonight, and we don't have any public speakers right now, I guess we would have our commission and staff comments and inquiry. So do we have any commissioners who would like to make a comment?
Well, we just, I do have an inquiry. Since this ex-chairman Jennings lives adjacent to the property, there are questions of recusing.
No question I am going to recuse. I'm just here for the preliminaries.
Oh, okay. We don't, I did not, we did not approve an agenda with staff comments or public comments or official comments.
Right, we'll move directly into item 1A.
Okay, made that easy. Okay.
Chairman, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but if you're, if we're ready to start the item now, I have to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet of the property that's under discussion. And so I wish you well.
Thank you.
I'll go have a glass of wine.
Okay, we will start with the Malibu Middle and High School specific plan. Firemen, final environmental report number 200001. Local coastal program amendment number 21-002. General plan map amendment number 21-002. Zoning map amendment number 22-001. And zoning text amendment number 22-002. An application to redevelop and modernize the existing Malibu Middle and High School campus and former Juan Cabrillo Elementary Campus located at 30215 Morning View Drive. And it's within the appealable coastal zone. At this point, do we have any commissioner comments?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say a couple of things to make the audience be clear what we're doing tonight, and I'd like Trevor to correct me if I am incorrect. But what we are doing, and everybody who's read this thing, which is probably five people, this is all setting the stage for future CDPs. What we're doing is doing a specific plan which will change municipal code and the LCP and all the other things that are read off to allow future CDPs to follow the specific plan just for this property. We're also going to review as part of that the EIR which is required for the specific plan. And the, I guess the EIR requires mitigation monitoring. In what I consider a highly unusual situation, the applicant is going to monitor himself and the city is not going to monitor the following of the EIR. The future CDPs will be issued by the city after a hearing of the planning commission. They'll be in four different installments. And I think that about does it as far as setting the stage. We are not approving any particular item tonight. We are approving the ability for those items to be considered in the future as being, if we change the specific plan, the items will be under a different zoning section than any other zoning section in the city which will allow certain things to happen and certain things not to happen. I think I have everything, is that correct, Trevor?
So you're correct that this is, we're considering the legislative items that are part of this proposal. You're making a recommendation to the city council. So you're reviewing the proposed specific plan, which includes a mitigation monitoring program and statement of overriding considerations. And then on top of that, I'm sorry, the specific plan and the other legislative entitlements and the EIR. So you're reviewing that and then making your recommendation to the city council. And then a coastal development permit application for the actual construction of the high school will be following at some point in the future.
I just want to add one other thing. According to the staff report, only Phase One is funded. So the Phase Two, Three, and Four are dependent on a future bond issue. And that's, I think, everything.
Okay. Do we have comments from staff or we go right into a staff report?
You can go to the staff report.
Okay. I believe Renika has the.
Okay, I believe we've got everyone that we're gonna have this evening. So at this point, I would like to call the order. The Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting or a special meeting of May 31st, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu.malibu-city.org/virtualmeeting. At the screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch to watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise your hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute for each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show the slide? There we have. Raise your hand and on the right and instructions on left and then what to do on the right. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand or I will call on you. I'll call you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May, I have a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Jennings. Commissioner Maza. Commissioner Wetton.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
And Chair Hill, it will be absent this evening.
Commissioner, I'm in chairman, I'd like to make a. A motion to approve the agenda. Quick question, no, no item with public comment or commissioner comment or staff comment tonight, correct?
Might we, no, that's, I'm sorry, nevermind. Uh, no, we don't have any of the public comment tonight because it's a special meeting.
Yeah, I move, we approve the agenda as staff recommends.
Okay, great, roll call.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
You have, uh, the motion carries.
Okay, so since we have a special meeting and we don't have any ceremonial presentations of any sort tonight, um, and we don't have any public speakers right now. I guess, uh. We would have our commission and staff comments and inquiry. So do we have any commissioners who would like to make a comment?
Well, we just, but I do have an inquiry. Since this. Chair, ex-chairman Jennings lives adjacent to the property. There are questions of recusing.
No question, I am going to recuse, I'm just here for the preliminaries.
Oh, okay. We don't, I, I did not, we did not approve an agenda with staff comments or public comments or.
Right, well, we'll move directly into the item 1A.
Okay, made that easy. Okay. 1A.
Chairman, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but if you're, if we're ready to start the item now, I have to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet of the property that's under discussion and so. I wish you well.
Thank you.
I'll go have a glass of wine.
Okay, we will start with the Malibu Middle and High School specific plan. Firemen, final environmental report number 20001. Local coastal program amendment number 21 dash 002. General plan map amendment number 21 dash 002. Zoning map amendment number 22 dash 001. And zoning text amendment number 22 00, 22 dash 002. An application to redevelop and modernize the existing Malibu Middle and High School campus and former Juan Cabrillo Elementary Campus located at 30215 Morning View Drive. And it's within the appealable coastal zone. At this point. Do we have any, uh, do we have any commissioner comments?
Uh, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, uh. Say a couple of things to make the audience be clear what we're doing tonight. And I'd like Trevor to correct me if I am incorrect. But what we are doing. And everybody who's read this thing, which is probably five people, um. This is all setting the stage for for future CDPs. What we're doing is doing a specific plan which will change. The municipal code and the LCP and all the other things that are read off to allow future CDPs to follow. The specific plan just for this property. We're also going to review. As part of that, the EIR, which is required for the specific plan. And the. I guess the. EIR requires mitigation monitoring. In what I consider a highly unusual situation, the applicant is going to monitor himself. And the city is not going to monitor the, uh. The following of the EIR. The future CDPs will be issued by the city after a hearing of the planning commission. They'll be in four different installments. And I think that about does it as far as setting the stage. We are not approving any particular item tonight. We are approving the ability for those items to be considered in the future as being. If we change the specific plan, the items will be. Under a different zoning section than any other zoning section in the city, which will allow certain things to happen and certain things not to happen. I think I have everything, is that correct, Trevor?
So you're correct that this is, uh, we're considering the legislative items that are part of this proposal. You're making a recommendation to the city council. So you're reviewing the proposed specific plan, the, uh, which includes a mitigation monitoring program and statement of overriding considerations. And then on, on top of that. I'm sorry, the, the specific plan and the other legislative entitlements and the EIR. So you're reviewing that and then making your recommendation to the city council. And then a coastal development permit application for the actual construction of the high school will be following at some point in the future.
I just want to add one other thing, according to the staff report, only phase one. Is funded, so the phase two, three, and four are dependent on a future bond issue. And that's, I think, everything.
Okay, um. Do we have comments from staff or we go right into a staff report?
You can go to the staff report.
Okay. I believe, uh. Renika has the staff report this evening. Am I correct on that?
You are correct, Commissioner Smith, I hope you can hear me okay. If we could just give her a moment, she was having issues with her computer and she has restarted it. And if that doesn't work, we'll just have her call in, so if we could give her a moment, see if that works.
Of course.
Perhaps while we're waiting, would you like to take disclosures? From the commissioners?
That's a, that's a great idea, how about this disclosures, gentlemen?
I've, I've been on campus many times. I know nothing other than is written here on the changes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Uh, well, I'll start by saying all three of my children attended Malibu High School all, all the way through. I met with several neighbors. The neighbors up on Clover Heights, Terry Lukoff, Jude, Judith Gilmore. Uh, and then I had a telephone conversation with Charlotte Freeze. Uh, regarding their concerns, I. Did not learn. Anything that's not in the, uh, you know, in our packet. I did learn a few things prior, prior to reading the packet, but anyway, I, nothing new.
Okay, and then I, oh, there she is, Ms. Brooks is here. Um, yes, uh, for me, it was, uh, I, I did talk to Terry Lukoff. And Ms. Freeze did call me, I, I feel bad, I did not call her back, I understand, uh, what, what she was asking. And, um, I talked to Adrian a little bit this morning and, uh. You know, there, there's a lot here, so to say I didn't learn anything new would be incorrect, but I've learned a lot, but didn't learn anything different than what in the staff report, so with that. Ms. Brooks, I believe you can, uh, you can start to, start the program here.
Of course, and my apologies for my technical difficulties, my worst nightmare. All right, so hello, good evening, uh, my name is Renika Brooks and I'm a planner with the City of Malibu Planning Department and I will presenting the Malibu Middle and High School Campus Specific Plan, um, which is requested by the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District to establish development standards and plans for the redevelopment of their campus, which includes the former Juan Cabrillo Elementary School and the existing Malibu Middle and High School Campus. The specific plan will be implemented over four phases. Each phase would require a coastal development permit. Um, and it's to be implemented over the next 10 to 15 years. Um, tonight, the planning department is requesting the planning commission to consider the adequacy of the EIR that was certified by the Board of Education. And we're also requesting the planning commission to consider, um, the entitlements requested by the school district to make, um, recommendations to the city council on the specific plan and the associated legislative amendments. Um, just to give a little bit of background of, um, to about how we landed here. The plan comes to you after many years of meetings held by the school district that was an effort to engage stakeholders in the development of the master plan for the campus. Um, in early, uh, 2019, the planning department began engaging in a conversation with the school district as the master plan continued to evolve, primarily because there were several components of the specific plan that did not comply with the current development standards. Um, as alluded to in your staff report, some of those standards include, um, heights, uh, request for height above, um, the current maximum of 18 feet. And there was also components of the, of the development that encroaches within the hundred foot ESHA buffer. At that time, um, the planning department determined that a specific plan would be the most appropriate entitlement for the redevelopment, primarily because again, it's to be implemented, implemented over four phases over a span of time between 10 to 15 years. And also rather than applying for multiple variances, um, to exceed the current development standards, it was best to, um, establish like an overlay or a specific plan, some sort of entitlement that would, uh, conceptually approve the location and heights of buildings. Um, for this project, the school district serves as the lead agency under CEQA. So again, although we began this conversation with the school district in 2019, uh, because the school district serves as the lead agency, the city couldn't begin processing the entitlement until the Board of Education certified the EIR, which occurred in January of this year. Uh, we did take in the application a month before just to kind of get the ball rolling, but we couldn't really make any formal, do any formal review or conceptual approvals until the, the CEQA document was certified by the Board of Education. Uh, when the project was originally submitted to the city, um, it included the legislative entitlements and the CDP required for phase one. Uh, that CDP is still running through its, um, review with the planning department, but because that CDP cannot be implemented until the coastal commission certifies the LCP amendment, um, the school district requested the specific plan move forward in advance of the CDP, which is why we're here tonight. Um, the, the CDP for phase one includes the demolition of the former Juan Cabrillo Campus and the reconstruction of a new high school building, uh, with a proposed height of 36 feet. Um, there are several components of an application that are still incomplete, uh, but once it's complete, it will come back before, um, the planning commission for consideration. Next slide, please. So here outlined in yellow, um, defines the boundaries of the specific planned area. Um, it's included, it's proposed on three of the nine contiguous parcels that are owned by the school district with a total lot size of a little over 52 acres. Next slide, please. The specific plan includes a request for several legislative amendments. The first of all, the, including the, um, review of the adequacy of the EIR, um, certified by the school board. Um, the specific plan also includes a request to amend the LCP. Um, that would include the development standards that would apply for the project area. Um, the plan also includes a general map amendment where one of the maps, um, for the property will, um, be designated as having an approved, um, specific plan for the parcel. Um, the same amendment will occur in the zone, in the zoning map amendment and the development standards of the plan will also be included in the zone, in the zoning code. So here is an existing, um, site plan for the project area. Um, I primarily included this slide to show, um, the scope of the existing development that encroaches, um, in the ESHA setback, um, in some areas it encroaches almost up to the edge of the stream. Um, I felt to mention that part of the entitlements are to address the ESHA setback. There's a, um, a map, blue line stream along the western, um, property line of the project area. And again, um, the existing development includes a bunch of parking areas and buildings that go up close, um, almost abutting on the stream. Next slide, please. And this is the proposed, um, site plan. Um, the prod of the buildings would comply, um, they'll basically be pulled out of the ESHA buffer. All buildings will comply with the required hundred foot buffer and there'll be, um, certain components of the development would, would, would be allowed to encroach in the, um, hundred foot ESHA buffer up to 50 feet. Um, some of that development includes, uh, permeable parking areas, drive aisles and teaching platforms that would be used as part of the, um, school district's curriculum. Next slide, please. And this is an overview of the project phasing as mentioned. Uh, the application for phase one is currently in the process under a separate, um, separate path. Um, it includes the demolition and reconstruction of the school building. It's to demolish the Juan Cabrillo Campus and to reconstruct a new two-story high school building. Um, also proposed in phase one is the initiation of the ESHA restoration. Um, that is included, um, again, as a separate entitlement. Next slide, please. So an overview of the modified development standards, the school district is asking for, uh, modified development standards for certain components of the, of the redevelopment. Um, the first of which is to request, um, building heights to exceed the current maximum. The current maximum is 28 feet in height for institutional zone. Um, the new high school building is proposed that I believe 36, um, feet tall. Um, there are two new gymnasiums that are part of the redevelopment also proposed at 36 feet in height. And the, um, the school district will be constructing a new theater slash performing arts, um, center, which is proposed at a height of 45 feet. Um, their staff, their staff report includes some of the justification, uh, provided by the school district. Staff has not been able to, uh, review the structural plans for the high school. We do have, we do have architectural plans, but we haven't reviewed any structural plans for the, for the gymnasiums and the, um, performing arts center to see if those proposed, um, heights are warranted. That's one of the, um, recommendations requested, um, of the planning department from the planning commission. Um, the next development standard is the ability to include marquee signs, which are a typical type of sign, uh, that, um, that is associated with institutional zones, primary schools. Currently, both the LCP and the municipal code prohibit the use of marquee signs. Um, the specific plan will, um, honor the prohibition but provide an exemption for the Malibu Middle and High School plan. I did discuss, um, the request to allow certain developments within the ESHA setback. Um, the LCP requires that any new development comply with the 100 foot ESHA setback. And again, although all buildings will comply with that setback, there are certain components of the project that would, that the school district is, is asking, um, for allowance to encroach, um, up to 50 feet. Um, the school district is also requesting the ability for the proposed pool lighting to exceed the standards required in the Malibu Dark Sky Ordinance. Um, although this is a request the school district, um, has made, planning staff is recommending that we require the pool lighting to comply with dark skies. And that a site plan review be required, what's, I believe the pool is proposed as part of phase four. Um, staff is requesting, is recommending that we require the pool lighting to comply, with the submittal of a site plan review, um, as currently, um, as currently provided in the code. Um, the school district has also provided some conceptual grading quantities. Um, again, to span the entire scope of the redevelopment for over the next 15 years across all four phases. Um, because the latter phases are contingent on, um, the passage of bond measures, those phases are not fully developed. So staff really doesn't have the ability to determine if there would be a need to exceed the grading. Um, because the development is proposed in areas that are already developed, staff doesn't believe there would be a need to exceed the grading qualities. So we're, we're recommending that that language be taken out of the draft specific plan. Next slide, please. Oh, I didn't round through, I've got ahead of myself. So this site plan shows the locations of the buildings, um, that have, that are requested with the, uh, extra, extra height above 18 feet, um, in the south. Southwestern corner, the, like the, um, fuchsia kind of color in the lower left hand corner is the new high school building that's proposed. Um, it does include a height, a request of, um, at 36 feet. Um, in the middle is the proposed performing arts, um, center with a height, um, requested of 45 feet. And then the two gymnasiums, um, again, in the purple and yellow colors. Next slide, please. And I already went ahead and explained all the other requests for modification for the development standards. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the, um, school district served as the lead agency to, um, certify the environmental impact report. And this slide, uh, provides a list of the resource areas that include mitigation measures. There is a copy of the mitigation and monitoring report as one of the attachments to your staff report. One of the things that I, I feel the need to mention, um. As part of the processing of this application, as I mentioned, the CDP for phase one was being, was being processed concurrently with the specific plan. Um, a couple of months ago, because of the, the concern about the timing for the legislative amendments that require approval by the coastal commission, um, at the district's request, the planning department agreed to allow the specific plan to move forward in advance of the CDP. What, um, the planning staff just learned today was that the public works department has not yet, um, finalized their conceptual approval for the traffic. Um, it is still pending, um. I believe that is the only city department that would have to separate their review of the CDP from the specific plan. So currently, we don't have that, that list of recommended, recommended mitigation measures from the public works department. I just wanted to mention that it's, it's a part of full disclosure that, uh, we still do have a pending, uh, review from the public works department and Rob DeBolle is here that can speak to that, um, at the conclusion of our presentation. So the two areas highlighted in bold are the two areas where the school district has determined that significant impacts would result that could not be mitigated. As a result of that, the school district did prepare a statement of overriding considerations because those two areas were not able to be reduced to a level of less than significance, um, one of which was related to aesthetics, um, specifically related to the pool lighting that exceeds the threshold, um, of the city's dark sky ordinance. Um, because the planning department is recommending the pool lighting to comply with dark skies, we don't believe that, um, a, a statement of overriding consideration is needed from the city. Uh, but we do concur with the school district finding for noise, um, related specifically to, um, noise impacts. Um, on sensitive receptors, um, because school, um, schoolchildren, uh, would be on campus during the construction of the multiple phases. Next slide, please. So today, the planning department has received a host of correspondence, um, all of which I believe was forwarded to the planning commission. In general, there's, uh, a lot of concern about the proposed parking lot F, uh, which is a conceptual part of the plan. Um, once that particular phase of the project, um, is ready, is funded and ready to move forward, it would require the issuance of a coastal development permit, um, that will be under the purview of the planning commission. Uh, but we did receive a lot of correspondence, um, regarding, um, aesthetic lighting impacts, noise impacts and concerns about circulation and congestion. The city also received, um, some correspondence regarding some tilling. That was, is a, had occurred on the northernmost property, um, next to Clover Heights, the cul-de-sac at Clover Heights. Um, the school, we did bring that issue, uh, to the attention of the school district who, um, mentioned that that, um, work was authorized and the coastal commission issued coastal permit. Uh, we're still working with the school district to confirm that is the case. Uh, we haven't yet confirmed that permit and what the specific conditions or scope of work, uh, was authorized, but we, we are working with the school district to confirm compliance. Um, if it is determined that that work is not authorized, uh, we would amend the scope of the ESHA restoration plan to include some restorative measures for that property. Um, that property has a blue line stream, which is what the concern, uh, why there was a concern about the tilling. Um, the city also received, um, correspondence from the coastal commission. Uh, one concerned about the timing of the staff report that there wasn't adequate time. I know that this is, we're on a pretty aggressive timeline with this project. Um, and the, this, the coastal commission, uh, was not able to fully process, um, the staff report and provide a comprehensive set of recommendations. Um, there was also a concern, um, there also, also, also. There was also a concern, there are also, also, also some concerns about ESHA. It may be related to how we're wording the permitted development within the ESHA setback. And there was also a concern about the lack of LCP and coastal act consistency findings in the staff report, which was drafted, but was inadvertently left out of the staff report, but will be included in the city council report. And I think that basically sums up the correspondence. There were a couple of pieces that came in today that I was unable to get to. So I apologize for not being able to include that in my summary, but that generally sums up the correspondence on this application. Next slide, please. And that does conclude my presentation. I am available to answer any of your questions as our city staff and consultants. I do want to mention that the city biologist is here on the call to answer any of your questions. She does have another commitment and has to leave at 8:00 PM. So if you do have any questions specific to biological resources or the ESHA or ESHA restoration, I would suggest taking advantage of her expertise and posing those questions first while she'll sleep, while she's still in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I should have referred to you earlier as our senior planner, Brooks. So, okay, I believe at this point, Commissioner Maza.
Well, go ahead. I, I thought we were open for questions.
I, I open for questions or do we run up to public comments?
Well, I'd like to ask a couple of questions just to, hopefully we can hold down the time on speakers if some of them are answered. One of them is, this may be for Trevor, but if we approve an EIR, well, we don't approve the CIR, right? It's already been approved. This school has a history of serious pollution problems. And the EIR addresses some of them. But the EIR is monitored by the the builder. So and it's been very contentious in the past. If there's a violation of something in the EIR that the public finds or some other agency finds and the, the school district says, oh no, we're monitoring it, is there any recourse? Can, can someone go to a state agency, a public, the coastal commission, the city, the city staff or anybody else, or the, for example, could they just bulldoze the blue line stream and say, well, sorry, we were monitoring it, but I, I just, I've never seen a situation where you monitor yourself when you're building something.
Well, if, if the, you know, two things, number one, you know, the city will be, you know, adopting the, the EIR as part of this process. And if there is an issue and they, and the city wants some other entity to be conducting the mitigation and monitoring program, that can be conditioned in the project to, to do that as well. And then if there is a violation of, you know, a mitigation monitoring program, then that would cause problems for the project, there would be a violation of the approval score.
Okay. So we could say tonight, we recommend to the city council that the city staff monitor the EIR?
Yeah. And if you have a question about that program, I just having staff layout why it is set up as it is right now. And if there is a recommendation or a more appropriate body to be monitoring, that is definitely something that the planning commission here can recommend.
Okay. So I should ask staff? Okay, Renika or Richard? Is it right to monitor yourself and would the city be a better source of monitoring?
From history, I would think the city would monitor, but you know, if you're talking about the tilling, are you talking about the tilling specifically or just in general?
In general, if they go down there and discover there's 500 tons of lead underneath the building or something, what happens?
So I believe we could add project conditions per, for each phase of the project to require some sort of reporting or something as we've done with other school district projects.
Do you have a comment, Richard?
Commissioner Maza, yes. So as a government agency, they are able to certify and also police themselves. They, they, they do work with the state. However, the, the planning commission and the council, so planning commission can make a recommendation and the, and the council with or without the planning commission's recommendation, they could also make their own determination that the city, you know, be the ones to conduct the monitoring. That can be done. It, we've, I believe have a history of doing both when it comes to working with government agencies, but it would be totally fine. And then also commissioners, just when you're done talking amongst yourselves here with any brief comments, we should allow the applicant a chance to present. I wanted to make sure that takes place.
Okay. I'm just wanting, I just wanted to find out what can and cannot be done. Does, do we have an idea how long it'll take the them to present because we have the city biologist standing by? Should we ask them questions first or not?
The applicant would be limited to 15 minutes. Trevor, is there a procedural issue?
I, I would say, Rebecca, if you calculate, you have a calculation of how long a public comment will take?
I think full public comment will take, let's see, at least 45 minutes to an hour?
That won't leave much time. So I would recommend then, right now, if you do have any questions for the biologist that you asked now, and then if we're lucky enough to be able to get through public comment, and she's still here, then we can, you can ask further questions that may emerge after a public comment.
Okay. I'd like to ask the biologist. I reviewed the plant last and it seems okay. My only question would be this apparent unreported us conclusion on the violation of the blue line stream. As far as tilling goes, my question would be, is it mapped as a blue line stream? And would not that make it a blue line stream until it's eliminated? And what should we do to consider that?
Um, I think I understand the question. So it is mapped as a blue line stream in the Malibu GIS system, and I believe that that is what the associated environmental impact report and/or bio assessment showed. And so are you asking what that has to do in terms of the tilling that was done?
Well, we, from what I understood from Renika is the city hasn't had time to look at it. And so therefore we're not going to, we're not going to know anything about it, but we're going to be approving something to do with it. So do we need to do anything?
Yeah. So, right. So I would just suggest that Renika and I discuss that. So you know, I'd have to see where, what, where it is in relation to the blue line stream. I don't know that I could make a determination right on the spot, but I would like to see exactly where this tilling was. And we have been doing, you know, site visits here and there where I go out to the sites and see it for myself. So if that's a requirement, you know, I'd be happy to go out to the site and see it myself. And, and you know, we can discuss where it is in relation to the blue line stream and, you know, actions that need to be taken, I believe, Renika, unless I spoke for you.
No, that was correct.
Okay. So should we direct in our resolution staff to resolve the issue before it goes before city council? Cause once it goes to city council, it's all done.
Commissioner Maza can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you worried about during construction that the equipment or people or whatever will get into these areas? And, and somehow upset the area or whatever, because I can tell you from experience that you have to fence these areas off. So there won't be anybody that can get next to the stream and they'll be protected. That's all.
And no, that's not what I'm asking. Apparently it has been disturbed or it has not been determined whether or not it's been disturbed. Not that it will be disturbed in the future. We already apparently the EIR says, don't, don't disturb it. So my question would be, when, since they aren't ready to tell us that, should we direct staff to, to tell the city council that it's, it's under control or fixed or whatever? Because we're sitting in a situation, we can't do anything because we don't know. And I'm just wondering, when it goes to city council, should we direct staff to tell them? This is already disturbed, potentially disturbed, I should say. Not that it's going to happen in the future. Already the EIR says, don't mess with it. Don't mess with the line string. But this apparently has already happened recent. There's pictures of it in the staff report.
Okay. So are we, are we back to what my question was? Is this something that we're worried about that's going to continue to happen? And it will be addressed or you want to make sure it doesn't happen?
No, no. I, what I'm saying is we should have been told what's happening with this. Staff told us they haven't had time to do that. The last review of this project is when it goes to city council. So should we direct staff to report to city council on this issue? It's a matter of our city biologist saying it's cool or it isn't cool. But she can't tell us tonight. She just told us that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I wouldn't be comfortable saying yes or no, just based on not having enough information. I'd rather have more information before I can give you guys an educated answer.
And my thing is we're not going to have another chance. So should we? And maybe Trevor should answer this. Should we direct staff to tell the city council what's going on?
You could recommend, you, you would recommend that the council receive an opinion from the city biologist on the results of the investigation. And I think the city biologist can go out and perform the investigation after you raise the issue at this point.
Okay. Do you understand what I'm saying, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm doing, to me, it's, it, this is all, because I've done so much of this work, it's just a foregone conclusion. Whether if, whatever, if something has happened now, and I understand that because we don't know, it's kind of a problem for you, but in the, in the, in the big picture, it'll all be taken care of. It won't be disturbed or no one's going to get near it. And everything has to be fenced off and, and you know where you are when you're working.
And to be clear, the reason why this issue has not been resolved is that we know that tilling took place in April. We have the photographs. We're contacted by a neighbor of the property. We reached out to the school district and there is a claim, I guess would be the appropriate way to say it, that there is a coastal development permit that allows for the tilling and has instructions on how it can occur and what needs to take place afterwards. We have not been able to locate that coastal development permit from the coastal commission. That permit was issued before the city had its certified local coastal program in 2002, which was implemented in 2004. And we do not have copies of coastal development permits that were issued before the city began issuing permits. If we need any of the old permits, we have to rely on the applicant or the coastal commission to get them to us. So we have reached out to the coastal commission for any permits so that we could, could finish this research. So it's a bit more than just sending our biologists to the site. We want to insert, ensure that there were no violations of a past coastal development permit since that claim has been raised.
Okay. Well, in that case, should we go right to the applicant then and, and let them have their 15 minutes?
I see Commissioner Wettin has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Wettin. Mute. You're muted.
Sorry, guys. A quick question for Renika. That blue line stream is ESHA, mapped ESHA. What, how, what is the actual setback on that parking lot F from that blue line stream?
Good question. Let me pull up the, let's pull up a graphic here. While I'm pulling up the conceptual plans for the phasing, maybe somebody from the school district or can comment on that?
Nobody knows?
We, maybe we can get an answer after. Do we, you need it before the?
That's fine. That's fine. But just maybe somebody make a note of it and see during the course, we can figure, find out what that is. And the other question I have is, it looks to me like with regard to the other ESHA that's, that's adjacent to the existing Juan Cabrillo, that's going to be the new site for the high school. It appears like the, you know, we're actually improving the position of the, you know, of the structures relative to the ESHA from what it is currently. It looks like they're, you know, the buildings are going to be demolished that are actually in the, you know, in the ESHA and in the ESHA setback. And while we are approaching 50 feet, a 50-foot setback from the ESHA, we, it looks to me like we're in better position than we are now. Is that, would you agree with that? In terms of distance from, from ESHA?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And I, and that was one of the reasons why I provided both the existing and the proposed to show that in addition to pulling most of the development away from the ESHA, that project does include also restoration of that area. So it would be a net improvement of that ESHA, of the blue line string, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Looks, looks as though, yes. Okay, um, let's let the applicant have their 15 minutes and Rebecca, I guess you've got them. Are they ready to go?
Actually, I am not seeing them in the meeting. I was in the process of shooting an email. If you are in the meeting under another, oh, Steve Nacetti has a raised hand. Would he be a member of the applicant team, Renika?
He is, and I believe Julian Capida is also in the meeting. Irina is their biologist. Harper Inc. is from the architectural team.
Renika, for this portion, I think we would just need to stand and myself.
Okay.
For questions, we will likely need a couple others. Thank you.
Okay. I guess Mr. Nacetti, you up?
I believe so.
Would you like to reserve any portion of your time for rebuttal?
Actually, can I go ahead and start with that? Until Mr. Milica mentioned at this meeting, we were unaware of a 15-minute time limit. We were asking the commission to recommend a specific plan that impacts construction on campus for 10 to 12 years and costs hundreds of millions of Malibu taxpayer dollars. So I'd like to respectfully request that the crit commission grant the district an additional 15 minutes to attempt to comprehensively present the plan. Would, would that be acceptable?
That's a Trevor question.
Chair Smith, if you want to allow them like extra time, given you feel it's, it's proper for the scope of this, you're, you're welcome to, to do so unless there's objection from the majority of the, the commission here. But we do in general try to have everyone comply with the, the 15-minute limit. It's published on all of our materials. This is something that's everywhere and the district should have been aware of. So if you want to grant the, the extra time, you could do it. You can grant less than the full request. You know, it, it's, it's your discretion.
Commissioner Maza?
I, if we do grant extra, the extra 15 minutes, which is quite a bit, I think we need to at least have the ability to have the audience comments extended if needed.
If attacked, Commissioner Wettin? If we're talking Commissioner Wettin?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll, we'll allow this extra time, uh, Mr. Nasetti, and go ahead with your, with your report.
Thank you for your consideration. And yes, I think we'd like to retain five minutes for rebuttal at the end, if that's all right. Thank, thank you, commissioners, and good evening. We appreciate you allowing us to present the specific plan tonight. My name's Steve Nasetti. I'm the bond program manager for the school district. Normally you'd be hearing from our chief operations officer, Kerry Upton, but, and he will be here, but he had to attend to an emergency issue at a different campus, which might involve moving kids from one or whole schools on that campus to another location. So the, the community of Malibu has been working toward this plan, which is the basis of the specific plan for years. The design of the campus plan and subsequent design of the new high school, however, did not begin decades ago. The actual development of the Malibu campus plan began in two thousand and eighteen, following years of expressed desire to, to provide separation of the middle and high schools, as well as to provide top-notch, state-of-the-art learning facilities for the students in Malibu. Separating these schools was an important issue to parents who didn't want their sixth grade daughters hanging around with guys who shaved. This isn't about having separate mascots. We've seen a distinct drop in enrollment from fifth to sixth grade when parents pulled their students from the district for middle school. By the time each of those cohorts reaches ninth grade, it's nearly back to the fifth grade side, size. So, so this separation is intended to remove the primary reason for that drop. We've held over fifty meetings with the community at large and with various small, specific interest groups throughout Malibu to gain insight and, and gain input into this plan. And we've incorporated all of that input into all aspects of the plan. In twenty eighteen, the community in Malibu was presented for the very first time with a bond measure that would keep all Malibu money in Malibu to fund the first phase of this project. Measure M passed with an overwhelming approval margin in excess of seventy percent. The planning and design process has been guided by the Facility District Advisory Committee, which is composed entirely of representatives of Malibu. It's the only all Malibu Brownout Committee in the district. This committee, which was chaired initially by Karen Lee, and then now by Carl Randall, has been engaged and involved in the entire process and speaks with the voice of the residents. The school board has, in all instances, adopted the recommendations of this committee. The end result of this is the Malibu campus plan, which is the basis of the specific plan you're being asked to recommend tonight. It does take into account enrollment changes that have been occurring in Malibu, and it is right-sized for the community. Once this is recommended by the planning commission, it will be submitted to city council on June thirteenth, and then again on June twenty seventh, with the second reading for approval, which will be submitted to the coastal commission for review and approval after that. Uh, as Commissioner Mazza mentioned, um, this is a, a, a set of zoning changes to the L C P that will accommodate construction of a high school and other project elements. Um, in many, in many cities, the zoning codes already allow for this type of construction uh, through their institutional code. We're typically exempt from low, following local zoning codes anyway, but because the L C P overlays entirety of Malibu, we have to follow the L C P. The L C P does not allow the types of buildings we need in order to provide adequate learning facilities. Excuse me, the draft's specific plan was initially submitted to the city of Malibu Planning Department for review in April of two thousand and twenty-one. So it's an iterative process. So within that last year, the city providing input throughout and the district modifying the draft, uh, specific plan in accordance to that city input, we, 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 uh, arrived at a final version of, or a recorded final version of the specific plan, which was submitted to the city in December of two thousand and twenty-one, along with the E I R. City staff then requested some minor changes, which were incorporated and submitted over four months ago on January twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. That's the version before you today. Excuse me. Now, this plan has been developed with extraordinary involvement by the concerned citizens of Malibu. The money intended to build these projects cannot be used for any purpose outside of Malibu. The first project, which is construction of the new high school, has been designed and is ready to be built once the C D P is approved. This is a Malibu project for the people of Malibu, and we ask that you allow it to move forward expeditiously. Thank you again for your consideration. Now Stan Brankowitz will walk us through the district's presentation.
And if I may, can I have a share, share screen ability so I can present?
Yeah, Chair Smith, I, I just want to say, to, to say one thing too, before we get started. There was a, an email that came out from Commissioner Hill yesterday, was sent to other planning commissioners that was shared with the school district and it's available for the public to review. Um, we did offer the option for the district to continue this item if they wanted to, to further investigate or address that email, uh, but they've chosen to go forward tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
And may I be given share screen authority, please?
I don't believe, uh, the city has been allowing us to share screens recently. Alex, can you confirm or Parker? I'm not sure which of you is.
We, we actually do not allow you to. We need you to email us anything that you would be intending to present.
Well, the last meeting, we were allowed to, to present our presentation, so I'm not sure why all of a sudden we're being told we can't do it now.
Uh, would it be possible for you to email us anything that you would like to present here? Is it a PowerPoint or a PDF?
It is a PowerPoint. It is, it is, um, one second. It is twenty-seven megabytes.
Okay. Is there a problem with that? I can.
Can you provide your email address really quickly?
Yeah, if you want to take five and email me and we can figure this out real quick, I can get it up.
Can you take a twenty-seven megabyte file directly?
We should be able to.
Either way, I will work it out. Uh, my email address is A Montano, A M O N T A N O at MalibuCity.org. If you want to send me an email right now, I will send you a link and you can upload.
Okay, A M O N T O. Right?
A M O N T A N O at MalibuCity.org.
Chair Smith?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mazza.
I suggest we take a, what, Alex, a five or ten minute break?
Five minutes should be fine.
Five minute break while they load this.
Yes, that's, that's fine with me. Commissioner Wettin, Trevor, we okay with that?
Yes, it just, nobody, you turn off your screens, mute and, and do not discuss this with anyone, or take any calls or emails, communications during this period.
I do, I do want it to follow up on Commissioner Wettin's question about parking lot F. Um, it's not scaled out, um, but in that portion of the property, the blue line stream is approximately a hundred feet, in some areas a hundred feet, and some other areas a hundred and twenty feet from the property line. So it's safe to say the parking lot would encroach into the Escha setback. Um, I think it would be consistent with other developments, um, that the specific plan is allowing to encroach in that setback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can take five.
Back at seven thirty-three? Alex, do we start out the issue?
I have not received a single email since you guys went off. I am not sure.
Is Stan on?
When you first started to recite back your email, you had a misspelling in there. I'm wondering if that's the issue? And also check your junk folder.
And just to be clear, it's A M O N T A N O at MalibuCity.org.
That's correct. Um, and just send me an email and I'll send you a link to an upload folder.
I sent that, that's the email I sent it to at seven twenty-seven, so let me try from a different location.
Stan, you sent it to A M O N T A N O at MalibuCity dot, dot org?
Yes.
I was going to suggest, Dan, you want to email it to me and I forwarded to Alex just in case there's an issue with, you know, I don't know, but trying to maybe.
Right, give me a moment. Yes, I'll do that.
Or Alex, if there's a, if there's a link to, that needs to be sent to them to upload it because of the size, maybe you can send it to Renika and she can forward it to Stan since they're already in email contact.
Did you say you could take a twenty-seven megabyte file directly, or do I need to compress it or by link?
Um, you'll receive a link that'll let you upload. I just sent it to Renika. Um, I haven't seen your email yet, but if she can email it to you as well.
Yeah, I just fired off another one.
Where would we be without technology?
Okay, Stan, I just forwarded the link to you. You should be receiving it.
I'm looking.
And I got your presentation, I think, let's see.
Well, that was just to send.
Okay.
Oh, there's, okay, there's.
I also received your email, so you should have a link, upload it there, and we'll get it up. It should only take a minute or two.
Okay, one second, all right, loading.
We were all twenty-two, there'd be no problem.
Yeah, that was a week or two ago.
Okay, you should have it? Or no?
Yes, we got it. Give us one minute.
You may want to un, un, uh, mute Steve Nasetti, he had his hand up.
Thank you, John. It seems as though it's resolved. We'll see in a second. If you have a suggestion, if it's not.
Alex, would you unmute Stan? He has a sand race.
Got it. And then? Yep.
There we go.
All right. And tell me when you're ready to start.
Floor is yours.
All right, next slide, please. So this is just the context of the community around Malibu Middle High School. You can see it there, uh, on the western side of the, of, 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 uh, Point Doom. Next slide. Again, here's a, a little bit closer in view of the site, of the specific planned site, showing the various A P N numbers. Uh, we've got nine of them. We're merging three or two. And next. This is the, oh, really just a breakdown of the existing campus, showing you the, the middle and high school as it is with the, with the two quads and. the former Juan Cabrillo Elementary School and then where the, the bus barn is located. Next page. And then you've already seen this. This is the existing Malibu campus. Next page. And then again, this is, you've seen this one too in Renika's presentation. This is the proposed site plan. So I'll skip over this one. Next. So I'll give you a little bit better perspective of how the development will go in place for the entirety of the specific, specific plan. You see here in tan, all the new buildings that will be, will be placed along with the parking areas as well. And that in relationship to the Esha, Esha setback. Next slide. And then we get into a little bit zoomed in more area of just the first one was an overview of the entire campus area. This is just of now the, the, the parcels that are being developed in the specific plan. You see the high school building is C and then the rest of the buildings are in tan there with the pool being an L. And then there's another stadium position over there off of the right-hand side. Next slide. So as an overview of this font has changed. Interesting. Okay, so on the specific plan, we're, we're demolishing eighteen existing buildings. We're gonna remove twenty-three existing portables. There'll be construction of seven new buildings. The, the pool will be demolished and then there'll, there'll be construction of an Olympic-sized swimming pool. And then of the total demolished or removed, it's one hundred and fifty-four thousand, almost one hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of improvements. And then there'll be two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-five new square feet constructed. Also, part of the specific plan is the Esha restoration. We'll have two monument marquees that are requested that are eight feet or below and ground mounted and then also parking. Next slide. So getting a little bit more detail about this, the, the high school building, the support services, that's the phase one C D P. That spelling C, that's the one that's gonna be coming to you again soon. Then we have the construction of building D, which is the middle school gym, fitness, P E and student activities and food services building. Construct building J, which is the high school gym and P E. Building H is the visual and performing arts building and building I is the special ed and campus wellness center. Next slide. And then we'll be placing the existing pool with new, new lighted Olympic swimming pool. Construct building M, which is the upper field house and then we'll have the bus barn relocation that it, it's a small bus barn. It handles five active buses and, and two in storage. Next slide. And then another part of the specific plan is the slight, well, the rearrangement and addition of some parking. You can see the existing parking lots that currently exist. And then on the right-hand side, these lots A and B will remain. The few other lots will be removed and then new parking lots will be added. Parking lot F with the fourteen spaces at the bottom, that's the one up on, on the north side in the cul-de-sac. And that's actually gonna be built in phase three rather than four, I think was mentioned in phase four. Next slide. And then also rounding this specific components, we have some utility improvements that deal with septic, we'll have the native landscaping. And then there will be a solar panel system component to this. Next slide. And then just to give you an overview, what's being demolished, what's being demolished is in red. And what's in purple here is we didn't have an up-to-date aerial photography for this. So those, the ones with the purple axes show you buildings that are already have been removed, but the rest of the demolition is marked out in red. And so all you really have left over that exists will be buildings A and B, which is shown by the construction site at the bottom. Again, not a, not a current picture and building E. Next slide. And then we wanted to give you some context on the, on the building heights. And we have three cross-sections of the plan, plan views or, or profile views, I should say, of cuts across the, the campus. And the way these tick marks are oriented, you've got the A, B and C, the, the tick marks on the top indicate which direction the view is. So for example, the view on, on B section is going to, section B is to the east and A is to the west and C is back to the east to give you the best possible views here. Next slide. So for the cross-section in section A, these are the comparison of the building heights. And the high school, which has been designed, is shown there in tan on the left-hand side. The existing buildings are shown with red dashes and semi-transparent gray boxes. They exist and then the new buildings, just in a massing context, as part of the specific plan at their heights are shown in purple here. And the existing grade is shown in black. So this is context A. Next slide. Context B, again, same color situation. The tan is the designed high school building. The purple is the, the specific plan building massings and the gray with red boxes in the gray up above is in the side are the existing structures that you see. Next slide. And then the last heights context shows the, again, same situation where you have the purple of the massing new, of the new specific plan buildings and then the gray being the existing. Next slide. Now, the specific plan is phased and it's, it's four phases, but we're actually seeking to make it a total of five phases with a, a phase zero. And what we would like to do is break out the abatement and demolition of the Juan Cabrillo Elementary School buildings as, as phase zero rather than be including it with phase one. It used to be, as Renika had mentioned, it was all combined in one. We would like it split out. And so you've got phase one is, is listed here for the high school building and parking lot and the D parking lot. And then phase two is constructing building D and that, and the middle school quad, phase three. Demoling the, the buildings, the high school buildings and, and moving the portables and constructing buildings J, K and M. Parking lot E and F and bus barn relocation in phase three. Next slide. And four, we've got the demolition of these remaining buildings. You got the pool, the, the, the Boys and Girls Club, J E S portables are being moved. The restroom portable is being taken out. Bus barn is being relocated. The M and O warehouse is done and construction of buildings H I and, and moving the boys, girls club on her face for. Next slide. All right. So a part of this project, a big part of this project is the Esha restoration plan, which is intent to revitalize the Esha along the district's property on, on the western boundary. Here's a planting pallet showing you the, the type of plants that are posed for their plantings. Next page. Next slide. And here, the original Esha plan that was put in with a specific plan, you can see here, it shows the, the area of the, where the restoration will occur and all those multicolored letters are the specific plantings, the Esha plantings. And you can see that through. And then you can see phase one building at the bottom with a, a square box at, at the zone A mark and then zone B of fuel modification. We understand there's some issues with, with fuel modifications. So we've, we've come up with a revised Esha restoration plan, which is on the next page slide, please. And that's where you can see in the area where you have the overlap between the zone B of the fuel modification area with the Esha boundary, I mean, the Esha buffer. Is we move the trees and the shrubs back into the Esha and only put in a, a common Yaro, a, a basically a, a ground cover material in the fuel modification area so that there would be no issues with that. Now, we're coming under state requirements and not county requirements. So there's no requirement here for a fuel modification plan. It's just following the fuel mod requirements of the state. Next slide. And then, so what's gonna happen with this plan is, is removal of all the structures within the fifty-foot buffer. And then we're gonna remove all above-ground structures within the fifty to a hundred-foot buffer area. We'll have permeable paving in the hundred-foot buffer area. And then as part of the specific restoration components, we have weed abatement, we'll have invasive plant controls, seeding and planting and erosion prevention and stability improvements. Next slide. And so a question has come up from the R B about the stormwater management plan. We will let you know it. As you probably know, it's the law that we're going to follow. It's, it's requirement of, of have been having a N P D S permit under, under Los Angeles. So next slide. And this just lets you know that, you know, that, that the runoff that cannot exceed pre-runoff conditions, I mean, pre-project conditions, the post has to be balanced. And that we're not allowed to damage any of the, the natural areas, including the Esha either in construction or in the develop, the actual operations of the, of the project. So all stormwater will be corralled and not allowed to be discharged in the Esha without it going through a treatment facility, a treatment area that's either through rain garden area type thing through the primal paving areas and the bioswell area. Next slide. And then also there was, we wanted to point out that also the law requires no pollution of the Esha area. So that's going to be built into these, these plans and specifications to make sure that no pollutants that may be associated with a bus barn ever leave the site and, and go downstream. Next slide. So as part of the stormwater management, we've got the permeable pavers. You'll see those in the future color here. Got that within the Esha buffer area, as you can see that. And then in the lower right in the blue area, we've got a, the, the planted bio retention basin that will receive flows and allow it to infiltrate and into the ground or treat before it gets leased off-site. Next page. Now, the development standards we're asking for, Renika talked about this, about the, the standard is the, the twenty-eight feet. And we're gonna need some height increases in that to accommodate the school, school need for modern education. And we'll go off that a little bit more. And we also have the have the change to the roof mounted mechanical projections. And then we'll go to the next slide. We talk about the sports lighting. Talk about that more in a second. The electronic messaging signs and then encroachment into the buffer. We've, it's already been discussed. Next page. And then also discussed was the, the request for exceeding the grading per, the maximum grading per acre. We'll discuss that more in a second. And then also the, of the city staff have recommended taking it out of the specific plan. We would still like to keep it in as, as having a belt and suspenders to make sure that any retaining wall will any building wall can serve as a retaining wall. There's, that's clear because we're definitely gonna need that on this project. Next slide. And then here is the listing of the grading quantities. As you can see in phase one on the top, we have good quantity evaluations because the project has been designed where the other phases have not. And we still need these, these allowances to accommodate each phase of the project. If we use less, then we use less, but we need to at this stage reserve these amounts so that we have the ability to still bring these projects to fruition. Next slide. And so a little bit on the development standard justifications, like on the high school building, high school gym on building, we need forty-five feet. That's because we need to play C I F volleyball there. And you can see here, we need, we've got a five-foot distance from the lowest adjacent outside grade to the finish floor. Then from the finish floor, we need twenty-five feet for adequate tolerance and design and construction. We need another ten feet of long span structural and then five feet for the roof slope and paravet. So in order to be able to play C I F volleyball, we need a forty-five foot gym. Next, next slide. And then similarly with theater and performing arts, we need forty-five feet. And because we require a vertical stage opening of twenty-five feet to the bottom of the procentium. And this isn't what we would really want. Something we want, really want would be bigger than this, but this is the least that we can, that we can deal to still deliver a functioning and acoustical, acoustically sound program at the theater. And next slide, building C, this will need to be thirty-six feet and with two forty-one feet with the, the fume hood extension on the top. The student unit is programmed with a central space of four thousand suites. It requires also appropriate high-bowling ceilings to accommodate the modern education elements of this project. And then the science lab exhaust hoods need to be in compliance with ANZ standard and NFPA standards for getting the, the ventilation and vapors out of the laboratory hoods out of the, out of, out of the way of any persons being exposed to it. Next slide. And then building, continuing our building C, we've got rooftop outdoor learning area that includes the Esha observance. We're gonna have higher parapets and guards that are, that are necessary per the building code to protect people from falling off the roofs. Next slide. Then we got the, the middle school gym. It's a middle school, so not sad, but then, but that still needs to be thirty-six feet to accommodate its activities. Next slide. And then as far as the pool, we need to exceed dark skies. Unfortunately, we would love to be to, to meet dark skies, but we're not able to provide the, the required foot candles of lighting for both water polo competition as well as safety compliance without it. And these are the two. There's got the illuminating engineering society of North America standard. And then we also have the California building code requirement for safety. So we, we definitely will design to the maximum extent possible to reduce spill, light glare and sky glow. But we do believe that we will exceed, that we are going to exceed dark skies. Next paragraph. Excellent. All right. And then marquees that are normally prohibited, although we've operated without them before, that doesn't mean we, we, we don't need them now. We do need them for a proper, properly operating school to communicate with students in the community. As you know, the school operates as a as a safe haven in times of disaster. And so it's helpful to have the ability to create communications that, that serve those concerns. And again, these are ground-mounted, not large, high-up signs. Also, with the Esha buffers, we need the encroachment. I think that's been discussed enough here. Next slide. And then the grading quantities, although we like what the staff is saying about that, that there can be some balances. We still, we believe that we still need to have accommodation for these exceedances. And if we don't need it, we won't use it, but we shouldn't unduly constrain the, the project at this point. And then retain, the retaining wall issue, we discussed that. Next slide. And then as far as secret clearance is concerned, you're talking about, yes, the district is the lead agency. It is a public agency, just like the city is. And the, and in this instance, the district is the lead agency, the city and coastal commissioner responsible agencies on, on secret review. The draft D I R was leased for public review on October twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. Specific plan with the draft D I R was submitted to the city on December twenty-eighth. And then finally, I was certified in January twenty twenty-two by the district. And there's again, only the two significant unavoidable impacts of construction noise and pool lighting. And next slide. Okay, some additional considerations. The city mentioned, you mentioned, you know, that the district's policing itself. Yes, but the city does exactly the same when it comes to the city's own projects. And if some aggrieved person didn't think that the district was satisfying its monitoring requirements, it could certainly bring an action, a petition for writ of mandate against the district to compel them to clear up any potential violations. So it really isn't necessary. And I don't believe that the city actually exercised any M M R P control on the last project at the, at the campus. And so as the city is a responsible agency, it needs to, you know, make formal findings and a statement overriding consideration to fulfill its responsible agency duties. That's it for my presentation.
Perfect timing. Any quick comments from commissioners? Or we go to public comment?
Public comment.
All right. Ms. Evans, we have, I'm sure we have a few people that wanna speak to us. Can we get them started?
We do. Their first speaker will be Rachel Stow, followed by Bill Sampson and then Robert Brinkman.
Okay, Ms. Stow, you've got three minutes. Okay, Ms. Stow, you've got three minutes. Are you in with us?
I'm searching through the list. If you're in the meeting under another identity, please use the raise hand button to indicate your presence.
Okay, we can swing back to Rebecca.
Okay, is Bill Sampson present in the meeting?
I I am here. Are you are you hearing me?
Go ahead, Mr. Sampson.
Okay. First off, let's see, I've known John for a long time, so I suspect I know that he's not planning on bidding on this project. I don't know. All I know about Mr. Wedden was his campaign materials and it looked like he spent most of his time managing his family money, but I don't know if he's planning on bidding it. I understand Mr. Smith is a builder. I hope none of the three of you are planning on bidding on this because if you are, you should recruit yourself immediately. Next. I like to swim. I I'm kind of concerned about the lighting. I also am very concerned about dark skies because I used to be able to see the Milky Way from my house. And we don't get to do that anymore. The people from town who came to see us didn't, some of them, I don't think they realized that we're still stars in the sky. That said, I want to swim. There's several people I swim with that I see are in the audience. It strikes me, there's gotta be some way to put hooded lights over the pool. It would both satisfy my friends that are up there in Malibu Park. I saw Terry Lukoff is here. Sonny Halpern, who worked for me and did yeoman duty as the college and career counselor for probably twenty five years at the high school, lives up above there. I don't want their views hurt, but I'm I'll let them speak to it. I just wanted to know that I'm thinking about them, both for the height and for the lights. I played volleyball in the old gym. I played volleyball in gyms a long time. I I I don't understand why it has to be so high. But the engineers are working on that. I could sure not jump high enough to make anything happen where a ball be bouncing at forty feet. That takes an NCAA division one player. It's not gonna happen in high school. But it's their view. I don't live up there. I don't want the lights harming them. But I do want, I do think you engineering types ought to be able to figure out by now some way to light the pools so that us old folks could swim in the morning and especially the kids. It's dark real early in January. My daughter was fortunate enough to swim. She was fortunate enough to play water polo while she was there. And without without light, light, she couldn't have done either one. I hope there is some way to accommodate that. I am concerned about the precedent. When I go to the pool, I see a house lit up pretty much like a San Quentin exercise yard. If you go straight up Guernsey toward the hill, you'll see what I mean. Get out there five o'clock some morning and you'll know. But figure out some way to engineers. We're paying everybody a hell of a lot of money here. Oh, I didn't see the time thing.
Yeah, fortunately, I am running the clock on Prime Gov, but it's not updating the Zoom meeting for some reason. So you are in time.
I please try to do it next time. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Robert Brinkman.
Rebecca, can you give people a one minute warning if if the clock's not showing so they can get a little heads up that that they're running short on time?
Sure.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Robert Brinkman. I live on Filary Heights, which is overlooking the athletic fields and the school and sort of parallel to Clover Heights. We actually bought this property because we wanted our kids to attend the schools here. So we're very supportive of the school. We appreciate everything you're doing in in terms of improvements. But there's one specific act aspect that I want to vehemently object to, and that is the building of a parking lot on Clover Heights. That's even though we don't live on Clover Heights ourselves. The problems that that would create affect the entire neighborhood. I walk my dog here on the streets, which as you may or may not know, don't have sidewalks. That's fairly okay on Filary Heights. You take your life in your own hands if you go on Harvester because people race around the blind curves there and it's very, very dangerous, especially at night. On Clover Heights, it's okay, but I think if there's a parking lot there, it would increase the traffic. Not just on Clover Heights, but it would make Clover Heights more dangerous because people that don't live there would come to park there. Not just the people that are allowed to park there, but also the people that might want to park there or think they can park there. And of course, it would increase traffic in general in in the whole area, including Harvester. I think you would be endangering the people that live here because there is no other way to to walk these streets. And a lot of people do that. It's not just me. There's a lot of people with dogs that walk their dogs early in the morning or that just go on walks for that matter. So I think it's a safety issue. You can't just increase traffic in to that degree without protecting the residents. I also think it's a dark sky issue because the parking lot would presumably have lighting. Which is just making the the lighting situation with the dark skies worse because the pool's already infringing on that. And this would just make the problem bigger. Since we're the people that are most affected by this, the the area of Malibu Park, we have to deal with the increased heights of the buildings. We have to deal with the decrease in dark skies because of the pool. I think you should give extra consideration to not further impose upon us. And I think that parking lot, those fourteen spaces, there's got to be a way to to get around that. I think one of the justifications for it that I heard in a previous meeting was that you need handicap parking spots up here. I think you could put just paint some handicap parking spots at the end of the cul-de-sac if you really needed them. Maybe you can get four, five or even six in there, but there's no need to build a parking lot. Which, by the way, would also have to be built on that field that I thought was part of the Esha. In fact, when I had previously suggested in a meeting that that field could become a garden for the school. That was immediately put down as a suggestion because people said, oh, no, 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 it's an Esha, you can't do that. Month or two ago, the school just tilled the whole field under. Apparently, they don't think it's that sensitive. And I think if they can till the whole field, then then it should be possible to put a garden there, but whatever you do.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. You are at time. I know. Again, this the screen was counting down, but it stopped at some at five seconds for some reason, but you have custom it the three minute mark. Our next speaker will be Isaac Burgess, followed by Stacy Rouse, followed by Colin Drummond. So I Isaac Burgess.
Yes, good evening. I'm Isaac Burgess, Director of Malibu Schools Pathway. As you're making your considerations to recommend to the city council, I'd just like to just share that, you know, we're very thankful for the support of the voters and the residents of Malibu, who in two thousand nineteen overwhelmingly passed a hundred and ninety five million dollar bond with over seventy percent voting approval. That says a lot about our community and continued support of our educational facilities. Also, I would just like to share that this has been truly a collaborative effort over the past few years with involvement from school staff, administrators, parents, students and community stakeholders that that were directly involved in this entire entire process. As well as input, you know, that was sought and continues to be sought to hear and to listen to our school neighbors with the building of this this new high school and to listen to their concerns and address them in a timely manner. I can speak firsthand of the excitement and enthusiasm and optimism that our students and our staff, teachers, parents, and even the community partners stakeholders have shared regarding this this new facilities that will be built for our students, which I believe personally that will bring back students to our Malibu schools and to increase our enrose enrollment as we have these state of the art facilities. And to be able to provide these wonderful experiences, continue to provide wonderful experiences for our students, staff, et cetera. So last, I would just like to say that not only is it gonna benefit our entire school community, but it's a hub, you know, the the schools are a hub in 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 the communities. And I just think it'll be very important as you make your considerations and recommendations to the to the city council that this is truly a community project and it would not only benefit our students our staff and our families, but also our community as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Rouse. If you could unmute her microphone.
Good evening. Thank you so much for holding this and for the way you're listening. I know as people who are making this decision, you want to represent everyone well. And I know that you want to feel confident about your decision. And it is hard to trust others, but I think Renika did such a good job presenting all her things. She's been a part of all of the FDAC meetings that have happened over the last few years. I am part of the FDAC and have been since twenty sixteen. I was also on the master plan committee that started in twenty eighteen. So I have been able to be a part of it, but also see all the others who have been a part of it and can vouch for the collaborative and deliberate and open process that have happened. Not only was the word really put out that it was happening, but the work all along the way tried to specifically invite people into the process. Specifically, like I know NCA has been consulted and I think we've learned a lot of how to bring in the community better. And so I'm sorry that you're feeling like this is just coming in at the last minute. I I think that's really unfortunate, but I want you to know that a lot of the people that you build around are recommending this and have been part of the process. And I hope that 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 can be leaned into. I I have been really impressed. I I've been a part of the district since two thousand four, when my first child started kindergarten. And I've seen a huge change in how people listen to each other, how they talk to each other, how they're really trying to avoid past situations of not properly disclosing things, not working together. And while I know we have a long way to go for the city and the school district to work together even better in collaboration, a lot has started. And I think a yes vote to support this tonight could go a long way to help them continue those relationships. I I do know that these buildings that we're talking about will serve the community as well. The theater will be used for the schools, but also for the public and the public does come to these presentations. The pool is a community effort. And this is this kind of development isn't commercial development or residential development. It is community development. And it is a really important place to put our time and our money and to go through this process. So I just really hope that that you will say yes tonight and help us not delay the the project timeline and not add to the cost. The bond money that was passed in twenty eighteen goes fast, costs are rising, and it's really important to try to stay on track. And also because this is a stepped process, things like the parking lot that were mentioned and concerns that people have when they're layered on in the process. These specific concerns can be addressed. So there is a ongoing process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Smith?
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Maza.
It was mentioned in the school's presentation that this committee is a Brown Act committee. And we've just had two speakers from that committee. I'm wondering if question of Trevor, if we're violating some kind of Brown Act situation here.
I I don't believe there's a quorum here, but they're they're just speaking in their individual capacity as in the public hearing to this body. So I think that that we're okay at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Colin Drummond, followed by Craig Foster, followed by Joe Drummond. I don't see Colin, but I'm guessing possibly he might be sharing a device with Joe Drummond.
Oh, yeah, let me get him. He's here. You have to come here.
Hi, sorry. I was on a delay on my my computer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So, yeah, so I'm, thank you, honorable commissioners, as usual, for your great service. It's a huge job. We really appreciate what you do for our city. So I've got two kids that have been through Malibu High and a third who's going into sophomore year. I'm also co-president of the Malibu Aquatics Foundation. We're a nonprofit that runs some masters program as well as the Malibu Sea Wolves. It's a competitive club program that we run out of the pool. So I I just wanted to shed a little light on what the activity is like at the pool. So so you understand that we have eighty swimmers, three levels from kids just learning to very competitive kids. We've got someone who's a, we've got an Olympic hopeful a relationship with Pepperdine, who's helping us with stroke technique. We're we're very actively competing all around Southern California. And so it and what we do is we share the pool, which is in great demand right now with with the rest of the community, with lap swimmers, and of course, with the high school water polo and swim teams. And it's basically being used constantly from six AM to like eight PM. And so having the fifty meter pool will be a tremendous addition. Virtually every single club that we race against in Southern California has this kind of facility. And we don't. So there's a lot of benefits to it. It's it's gonna be really, really fantastic to have. So the 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 kind of question I'm sort of raising right now specifically has to do with the lighting and 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 if that's at odds with dark sky. So you know, the the lighting requirements are are very specific. LA County Public Health is gonna insist on plenty of light on the surface as well, the bottom of the pool for lifeguard visibility. And so, so you know, we because we really use the pool from six AM to eight PM. It's really important that 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 we have the ability to swim during that time. I mean, just to give you one last bit of information for for our club, because we have to swim after the high school kids every every night during the week. If, for example, dark sky was to reduce us from sunrise to sunset, it would basically eliminate our our club. That would be putting eighty Malibu kids on the street, basically. So I just hope we can have a variance and we can work something out here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Drummond, our next our next speaker will be Craig Foster. Followed by Joe Drummond, followed by Rui Israel.
Good evening, and thank you all for your public service. My name is Craig Foster. I'm the only Malibu resident on the Santa Monica Malibu School Board. Malibu's public school families have been battered for seven years. First, there was discovery of PCBs in much of Malibu High and Juan Cabrillo Elementary, which caused many to leave and many who stayed to live in fear. Then there was the Woolsey Fire, which destroyed many, many homes, forcing so many families away. Finally came COVID with its distance learning isolation and yet another source of dislocation. In twenty eighteen, this community passed measure M, one hundred and ninety five million dollars from Malibu residents approved by Malibu voters alone for Malibu public schools alone. These funds largely to build a brand new twenty first century toxin free PCB free high school building. The overall plan for the new Malibu High School is Malibu's vision, created by Malibu stakeholders. The overall plan for the new Malibu High School is Malibu's vision, created by Malibu stakeholders. To support Malibu students as they ready themselves for college and career. With spaces that are safe and expressly designed to prepare them for their lives in the middle twenty-first century. Designs that are dramatically different than the tools, practices and goals of the past and what exists currently. Seventy percent of Malibu voters supported this measure. And Malibu residents and district staff have worked consistently and diligently to move us to this point. The school district, well aware of issues in the past, has worked hard to be as inclusive and sensitive and collaborative as possible. You find the staff recommendation before you today at a time when we absolutely, completely need to keep moving forward. Failure to do so will cause damaging delays and related reductions in what we can afford to build due to additional cost escalations. This is a vital project for all of us, all of us in Malibu. This is us. This is a Malibu project, supported by Malibu voters for Malibu families and kids. There is no they here. There is only us. I ask you please tonight to support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Our next speaker will be Joe Drummond, followed by Rui Israel, followed by Carl Randall.
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commission. Um, as my husband stated, that we have had three kids and still have one kid in the school. And he is a swimmer and he is on the Malibu Sea Wolves Club Team. So it would be devastating to not approve a site plan at the, at the site plan review approval from the Palling Commission. So it would demonstrate compliance is not possible due to safety regulations. That's our number one priority. I agree with everything Craig Foster said. Um, I think I sent some emails today with, from notes from the staff report. It does not increase the floor area ratio. Nor does it allow for an increase in the maximum student population. This will be the state of the art gorgeous school. We've been clamoring for to attract more students and families and which, what we've been fighting for regarding school separation and is a step in the right direction. We joined the school in two thousand and thirteen when PCBs were at, I, I think at the hall all time high. And we saw like twenty, at least twenty percent of the students leave. And having a whole new school will just attract, I can only imagine. I mean, we had Cindy Crawford, we had Ricky Schroder's kids in my daughter's class and they all left because of that. So I'm sure the school will be attracting everybody. Not everyone will just be going to private school. Um, the increased building heights for the proposed school building thirty-six feet. Apparently the proposed thirty-six foot tall school gymnasium is cited where a forty-eight foot tall gymnasium buildings currently exist. Is this correct? I just want to check that. That was in the staff report. Um, so that's a good thing if it's lowering the, the. The height, but it's still good for volleyball. MH, MMHS Gymnasiums and Theater Performing Arts Center. Is what we've been wanting forever. Like we look at Barnum Hall in Santa Monica and we're like, wow, we have this moldy, awful gymnasium. And um, the auditorium has terrible sound. It's like, my daughter was a singer and she, it was just terrible there. And, and I, I just am so excited. Uh, I mean, when my kids are out, I'll still be going to shows there. So it'll be great. Um, also, what about the pool? The existing twenty-five meter pool will be replaced with a new Olympic-sized fifty-meter pool, as noted in the EIR. The duration of the illumination of the proposed pool would be the same as the existing use and operation. So it's not changing anything. Um, but this is something residents have desperately asked for for years and serves the entire community. The current pool is way too small and not preparing our kids for the Olympic level swimming, of which we have several hopefuls on top of serving master swimming. Et cetera, for locals through City Hall. And the lighting will only be on until eight PM, which really only matters in winter when it's dark. And once they're done swimming, the lights are off. Um. And I think it's also restoring all kinds of echo, which we're looking forward to. So anyway, please do not put any restrictions on the lighting other than what, what Bill Sanson suggested. Okay, thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rui Israel. And I'm scrolling the meeting. If you're here under another name, please use the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen to indicate your presence. And we'll circle back to that individual Carl Randall. Are you present in the meeting?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
All right, great. As, and as somebody mentioned earlier, I, I am the FDAC Chair. Um, although I'm here as a private citizen of the Malibu residents. Um, I wanted to make it clear that that group is nine members of the community. And we are driving this project. It is Malibu community members driving a project, as has been said by a bond passed of seventy-two percent. To pay for and specifically to build a high school. Um, I, I just want you to kind of understand as you think about this project. That this should be a collaborative process between the city and the school district on this uh situation, specifically the FDAC. Um, this is not a developer trying to make millions of dollars off Malibu. This is for Malibu residents pushed by Malibu residents. Um, couple of things, I wanted to make a reference that this is really part of a three-pronged approach. Those in the education field are trying to push for Malibu. You probably are aware that there's a drive for local control, uh, separate the school districts, which is now being driven specifically by our city council. It has been a top priority for years at the city officially. Um, so that's first piece. And this is the piece to remove some seven-year-old classrooms and build some state-of-the-art programs. That can lead us into the third prong, which is redefining our curriculum and getting twenty-first century schools that Craig Foster made reference to. Um, and we need facilities that uh are amenable to doing that. I did want to make reference uh to the pool lighting situation. Uh, I did, in my prior life, I did spend ten years as a Parks and Rec Commissioner. And I can tell you, uh, if there is a restriction on the lights and we're unable to do lights. Those that will be most effective will be the residents of Malibu, as the Sea Wolves gentleman spoke about earlier. Uh, the school will have some reduction in what they're able to do. But uh, we at every moment on the Parks and Rec, we were trying to find every minute of time that the school district would offer us to have the folks of Malibu swim. And this would impact that dramatically. So my last piece here is I'm uh, I'm asking you to adopt. Uh, the staff recommendation, but without the uh adjustments the staff is making specifically to pool lights and a couple of other pieces around there. Um, and send a sign to the city council uh as such as a staff references. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Our next speaker is Karen Lee, followed by Kim Ford and Valerie Seba.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. Hi, okay, so my name's Karen Lee and um thank you guys for having this meeting tonight. I've lived in Malibu for twenty years. We moved here when my daughter was one years old. Because in large part, we loved um, we heard such amazing things about the schools. And at that time, they were young and I thought, okay, they'll grow into the schools. And once we started them, I was actually shocked at the facilities. Love the teachers, but I always wanted to have incredible schools here in Malibu. I'm a resident of Malibu Park. I live on Morningview Drive. And when I heard about the FDAC Committee six years ago, I immediately, immediately applied for that. I became Chair of the FDAC Committee. And for those of you who don't know what it is, it's the Facilities, Facilities District Advisory Committee. And it has honestly been the most rewarding um, uh, board I've been on. I'm here speaking as a parent. But I want to let you know I became a part of that because I cared so much about our schools. Schools are community. Our community needs better schools. I mean, we had Measure M and I was a co-chair with Stacy Rouse and we raised, you know, I think it was a hundred ninety-five million dollars with more than a seventy percent. Um, approval and we want the schools to be fixed. Our, our community has spoken. It is so important that we not just have new schools, but the sport, the sports facilities. As everyone's been talking about the pools, how important that is in our community. So I want you guys to really pass this and put it on to the, you know, put it through to the city council. Like Stacy was saying, we can make minor adjustments along the way of the parking lot on Clover Heights, the, the lights on the pool. We want to be good neighbors. As I mentioned, I am a neighbor. But this is a huge part of um the heart and soul of our community. And. We have spoken in, in our vote with Measure M and putting this through. And there's been so many years we've also spent. Putting this out in the community and everybody who has seen it that I have talked to has loved this plan. It'll bring Malibu into the twenty-first century with not just our learning, but with our facilities. And I really hope you guys put this through and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Ford.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, Kim Ford, I'm a parent of two Malibu Sea Wolves and also co-president on the Board of Malibu Aquatics Foundation, which runs the Sea Wolves. Um, when our program is full, I think Colin spoke to it earlier, we have eighty-plus swimmers. And then we also have a master swimmer program for our community. And I can't emphasize how important it is for this new fifty-meter pool. For our team, for the rest of the community, for everyone that utilizes that pool. And the hours that we have available to use the pool begin when high school aquatics end at about four thirty PM. So we run, that pool is running non-stop from four thirty PM to eight PM every day of the week. And for us, for these kids, um, you know, we have Olympic hopefuls, they have Olympic aspirations. We have several swimmers that plan on swimming for Division One schools. And to have it, to not allow a variance to allow the pool lighting would basically kill our program. So all these swimmers, you have eighty kids that aren't going to have a swim program in Ma- in Malibu, which would be tragic. You know, we're, we're a community on the ocean. We should have a swim team. We should have aquatic activities. This is so important for our community and for these kids. And so I ask, I ask that you allow this variance to go through and approve it for our kids and for this program. For the lap swimmers, the lap swimmer swims simultaneously with our swimmers every evening. Um, it just means so much, so much to everyone in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker will be salaries, I'm sorry, Valerie Seba, followed by Carrie Lukoff. While they are making their um comments, anyone else who is present in the meeting and did not sign up in advance to speak wishes to do so. Please use the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen and we'll circle back to you. Thank you.
Thanks for giving me time to speak. Um, my name is Valerie Seba. I have a Sea Wolf swimmer and two high schoolers. And just, just a little comment, I really appreciate anyone who's in public service. I work in public service myself. So I know you have a hard job, but just if the. The snafu that happened at the beginning with the slides and who was running and no, you can't run the slides. If that happened between two teams that I was working with, I would be concerned actually that. The two teams weren't really effectively communicating. I know there's a lot of history in Malibu between. Uh, the district and the city and some, maybe some trust issues that are really deep seated. But what's before us is something that we really need to set aside our, our past differences. And think about why we're all here tonight and why we're also passionate about this. There are kids that are depending on us, their education, their future. Uh, is really depending on having a place to go and get educated that's safe. So, you know, we, we've been struggling with these schools that are contaminated, old, outdated. Um, and now we have this chance um to, to do good by our kids. And I really, I just can't impress upon you enough how important it is. Um, you know, for the next generation to have a, a safe place to go to school. Uh, you know, this, the school district is one of the reasons we moved here and invested in this community. And um, I would hate to see the community that, that called out for this, then kind of pull the rug out from underneath. The kids that, you know, that need this for their future. Um, I, I also am not an engineer, but just looking at the schematic that was shown, it doesn't, we're arguing about buildings being higher. But if you look at it on the grading plan, it doesn't really look like there's any buildings that are any higher than what's already existing. Um, and it also seems like nothing is going to get built. Um, you know, pool or gym or anything else until this first campus building is built. So, you know, maybe these arguments are not as pertinent as just getting this first step taken to get the kids into a safe school building. These, these school buildings are a community resource and it's part of what makes. Malibu a special place and attracts parents to come here. Um, I, I just think we need to really stay focused on the kids and stay focused on what we're doing here. We're trying to give them a safer campus that has a safer place to be dropped off in the morning. Um, we're not going to be reinventing a bunch of new cars coming. We're just going to be able to give a safe place for these kids to be dropped off. And, and redirect some traffic. So I know my time is out, but let's keep focused on what we're here for. But getting these kids a safe place to go to school.
Thank you, Valerie. Our next speaker is Terry Lukoff.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Terry Lukoff. I'm a Malibu Park resident and I am talking to the. Planning Commission has received over fifty letters from Malibu Park residents who live on Clover Heights, Hillary Heights. Harvester and Bush Drive that are against the parking lot at the back of Clover Heights. I want to emphasize, we are not against building a new school. This is not. Don't build the school. This is about not putting the parking lot on Clover Heights. This will, putting a parking lot on Clover Heights will increase traffic in the rural Malibu Park residential community. There are windy streets, downhills on Bush Drive, dangerous curves on Harvester. No stop signs at the corner of Harvester and um, and Bush Drive. A bad intersection at the corner of Merritt and Bush Drive. And people walk their dogs, horses and stuff like that in the streets because there are no sidewalks in, in Malibu Park. Clover Heights is a particularly interesting street because it has the only access from a back street. To the Malibu Equestrian Center. Adding traffic to Clover Heights will impair horses going up and down the street. And the use of the Malibu Equestrian Center. There are all other alternatives. We have proposed to the school district many times that they, if they want to have. Parking at the end of Clover Heights, they can put five handicap spots, but they say that they can't do that. Because what happens is that the, the unsung thing in this parking lot is all school parking lots have to be lit. There'll be a parking lot, it will have lighting, it will have walkways that go down by the tennis courts. And those all will be lit also. So you're going to take that, combine it with the pool lighting, combine it with the lighting of the. Uh, of the uh football fields and you will virtually have eliminated any possibility of dark skies in Malibu Park forever. This is something that the school. It, it is not being forthcoming about when they're talking to you without all of these parking lots and adding additional lighting. Especially in an era when schools are demanding single access at the front of the schools. To be able to have a total security package. Malibu School District is probably the only school in the nation that says, gee, we, that we should have more access to the school. More different ways to go in there. And to get this access, they've gone ahead and they've rototilled over a blue line stream. Virtually trying to eliminate this blue line stream. roto-tilt over a blue line stream, virtually trying to eliminate this blue line stream from the, from the vision of Mal- of Malibu.
Thank you, Mr. Lukoff.
I want to make one other comment. A lot of what you're being told is not actually true, especially the heights of the buildings when they're going to put solar on top of the buildings on top of the height. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lou Lamont, followed by Mary Ann, followed by Charmaine Mark.
Good evening. Um, thank you very, thank you very much for holding this special meeting on the Malibu Campus Specific Plan. You all know me and I'm also a member of the Malibu Facilities District Advisory Committee and have been for years. Also, I served for almost nine years on the City Council. I was one of the original members of AMS with Laura Rosenthal and Craig Foster and on the Education Subcommittee for years. During all that time, I fought for Malibu to have its own school district and to separate from the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District and I'm still involved in that battle to this very day. What I came to tell you tonight though, is that despite my fundamental disagreement with the district about the relationship with Malibu, I fully support this specific plan. As members of the Malibu FDAC, we have all been part of the design and execution of this plan and you should know that this is entirely a plan that was approved by Malibu residents and parents. The district's representatives could not have been more dedicated to following Malibu's wishes throughout the years it took to put this together. They listened to us about everything from student and teacher needs, architectural design, classrooms, landscaping, even furniture. And they understood that Malibu is very different from the rest of the campuses throughout the district. This is completely a Malibu campus. The district made changes that we requested and made many accommodations in this specific plan to satisfy the concerns of neighbors, parents, the city and the coastal commission. If approved tonight, it will be the city's first step in making sure that Malibu has the best and safest schools for our children. You've all seen the plans, they're beautiful. And I ask that you all support our Malibu residents, parents, teachers, and most importantly, our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont.
Thank you Lou. Our next speaker will be Mary Ann, followed by Charmaine Mark, followed by Bessie Zhang.
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. My name's Mary Ann Riggins and I am speaking as a former student, uh, former parent, member of the community of Malibu Schools. And I am also on the, uh, FDEC Committee and have been since its inception. Uh, we have worked very hard with the district to design a plan that represents the needs of our education for our present students and our future students. Uh, we're hoping that this new exciting school will attract back many of the students that we have lost. In addition to seeing our community grow with more families moving in with the educational opportunities that this will present. Uh, additionally, the, uh, extra facilities such as the athletic facilities and the arts facilities are something that our community can be very proud of, uh, sharing and giving opportunities for those members who maybe don't have children in the school system and they're community members, but they still want to take part in the athletic abilities, excuse me, the athletic facilities that are provided. And then also the arts programs and the variety of shows and other entertainment that we'll be able to have as community members out here. Um, remember the reason that a specific, specific plan is required is our local coaster program and our municipal code didn't anticipate for these buildings having to be replaced, nor for the educational needs of what the 21st century would require. As you look forward to this, I encourage you to embrace it and fall in love with it, just as many of members of our community have done so far. I do support the pool and the pool lighting. I think it can be designed so that it will accommodate the dark skies. As we can see from the field lights that were installed, they have shown that they are directed onto the field and not the surrounding area. And I believe the improved lighting at the pool can do just the same thing. Um, as for the parking lot in Clover Heights, I understand the residents concerned and I do think that we should continue to find solutions uh, to fulfill the school's needs while also protecting the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you Mary Ann. Our next speaker is Charmaine Mark, followed by Bessie Zhang, followed by Sue Murfree.
Oh, hello. Uh, thank you, Malibu Planning Commission and Malibu City Council members. Um, I'm talking about the lights. I swim with the Malibu Masters Team three days a week. Um, at 6:30 in the morning at Malibu High Pool and there are other, um, there's another group of swimmers who swim at 5:30 in the morning. Um, and both of these, uh, swim times require that the pool lights need to be on, at least sometimes during the darker winter months. Uh, my husband, uh, we lived here a long time, Richard Mark, um, he, he was a recurrent Los Angeles County lifeguard. He swam with his masters group until he died of complications from skin cancer about five years ago. Um, I think a point that should be made about light is that swimming in direct overhead sun causes skin cancer. Uh, as swimmers, we apply sunscreen, but extended exposure to chlorinated water causes the sunscreen to wash off. And pretty much all the swimmers in the pool, uh, like the master swimmers, uh, we have a respect for the sin, uh, skin damage and cancer that occurs from too much sun exposure. Uh, over half of our team right now, and even our swim coach Eric, um, are, have undergone or are undergoing treatment for skin cancer. So anytime we can avoid the sun and get out in the pool as early as possible, we do it. Um, the pool bottoms white and the sun bakes down from above, sun reflects back up from the bottom of the pool. So when you get in the pool as early as possible, you avoid or mitigate sun damage. And that's our best defense against skin cancer. I had kids who swam at Malibu High, all went through Malibu High, were on the swim program. So we're a swimming family and, um, I think as parents at Malibu High, um, with kids in swim programs, Malibu Sea Wolves, um, those early morning and late, uh, hours with, um, you know, frankly, artificial lighting, you know, and that's against the dark sky mandate, I believe. But, um, those are the safest hours for the, for the kids to be in the pool. Um, that would be my opinion. Um, so we need lighting in, to swim early in the morning and that's why I ask you to reconsider your dark sky ordinance as it applies to the current and future Malibu High School swimming pools. Um, the only alternative we have locally, uh, for a swimming pool is Pepperdine University's pool. And they've significantly restricted our Crest Club swimmer access to their pool with the only times available to swim currently being high, high sun times of the day. So that creates a significant health risk for the swimmers. So that's, that's my comment. I thought I'd throw that in the mix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sue Murfree, followed by Bessie Zhang.
Hi, I'm Sue Murfree. I have triplets who are 14, who are at ninth grade at Malibu High School. I support approval of the school project without any modifications by the city. There have already been so many delays and any further delays would add significantly to project costs. Uh, two of my kids have been swimming with the Malibu Sea Wolves program, uh, which is a city program run with the city for over five years. Um, they also swim on the high school varsity team. We're already limited in access. We only have nine hours, uh, for my kids of swim time every week, which is frankly not enough time for them to be swimming. Um, any reduction in hours or any observance of the lighting, uh, requirements would, as, as many of the other, Colin and Kim pointed out, uh, and other parents would frankly eliminate swimming as a program, um, in Malibu, which would be frankly devastating for, um, all the swimmers, including my, uh, including my kids. Um, we don't have access to, uh, Olympic sized pool. Um, having a 50 meter pool would significantly, uh, increase, increase the competitiveness of our swimmers, which, um, is really important, especially for some of us swimmers who are, um, Olympic hopefuls and want to swim in high school. So again, I, I, I urge everyone to not delay this program any further. We've already, my kids are in ninth grade and it frankly, they're probably going to be out of school by the time all this, uh, work is completed and, and, and we cannot have any further delays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do have some other people who have just signed up. Um, so we're going to Bessie Zhang next, followed by Adam Friedman and Howard Rutske.
Hello.
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. Um, I want to thank Planning Commissioner members for hosting this amazing event for us to show us, um, our support to the, what the amazing work. The, uh, group of people I put together, you can tell they are so thoughtful and scientific about what they do. Um, I have house on Harvester myself and I don't care that, that neighborhood will have more traffic. We have a neighbor, we have a, we have a school in the neighborhood that more traffic around the school hours is expected. People moving near school for the convenience of being closer to school. There is a reason the school being there. We should not have any personal preferences to delay the growth of our children. They need the thing as much as they need it for nutrition in their body. It's so sad that Malibu, I, I heard about the mom who just talked about her kids not being able, having enough, um, exercising to prepare themselves for they do, for their, for their future. It's just that bizarre because some people just think, thinking, you know, the lighting in the pool is distracting their eyes. Uh, to me, it is not acceptable. A standard Olympic pool size and whatever the scientific things that's being ex- uh, examined and having showed, um, proved that it's all good, should be good to go. Uh, and I'm 150%, 200%, 300% pro to, towards the development of the school for our children, children's children and children's children's children. And we know how hard it is to get the community together to prove things like this. And I don't know what was the last time you guys have done it, but I know this time if we do it, we will do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Adam Friedman, followed by Howard Rutske, followed by Michael Burke.
Great. Uh, thank you. Um, on behalf of the adjacent property owners to the south of the Equestrian Center at both 6343 Merritt Drive and 30145 Morningview Drive. Um, specifically in regards to the proposed bus barn location below the Equestrian Center, we've received little to no details of its construction nor its design. We noticed that the enclosure is considered a mitigation measure for the noise impacts for five buses with testing beginning at 6:00 AM. Um, we also note that the aesthetic impacts, uh, are in a coastal zone and they're not really analyzed. And we also support the alternative location eight miles away, which we think would be a appropriate location. But, um, if there's any more information on the bus barn location, its design or how it's going to be built, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to get unmuted here. Our next speaker is Howard Rutske, followed by Michael Burke. And our final speaker will be Seth Jacobson.
Good evening. Thank you guys for doing this. Um, and thank everybody that's got it to this far. Community, neighborhood serving. This is for the future of Malibu kids. This is for Malibu. You can always find a way not to do something. Please don't do that tonight. Give everyone what they're asking for and pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Our next speaker is Michael Burke and our final speaker will be Seth Jacobson.
I'm sorry, I need to defer my time. I apologize.
I'm sorry, who would you like to defer your time to?
Next speaker.
Oh, okay, I see. Thank you. Um, so Seth Jacobson in the meeting.
I am. I, I actually don't have more to say, but, um, I think everyone has been incredibly articulate. And I just want to echo, uh, a couple of points. One is as, uh, the Chair of the Financial Oversight Committee of the District Budget Committee, I'm terribly aware of how delays can, of a month or a week or days can really cost the program phenomenal issues. And we would hate to see this beautiful design and this great opportunity, this 21st century school. As Craig so articulately mentioned, this, this amazing opportunity for our community to come together, to rebuild, to, to find a way to bring students back in our community in any way impacted. Uh, so I would really just, uh, would like to make that point. Secondly, um, I just want to note that having worked very hard on the, the field lights issue, that we can work together. This is an iterative process. Uh, we found a way to, to coexist between the field lights and the community. And I think we'll do the same with the pool, we'll do the same with the Escha, we'll do the same with, uh, the parking lot. We'll make it work, we'll make it happen because this is about Malibu. This is about creating a, a, a community experience and a community treasure. And I would just encourage, uh, commissioners who are all Malibu residents and who pay Malibu taxes who pay for these schools themselves to, to remember the children. My, I have three boys who went through the school and are just phenomenal because of that. And, uh, I would hate for our community to, in any way, lose this tremendous opportunity to really shine and shine brightly in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. And this is our final opportunity. If Rachel Stowell or Rui Israel have joined the meeting under another name, please use the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen to indicate your presence. And, um, I believe that concludes our public speakers.
Okay, as we move away from our wonderful community and back to us at the table, do, do any of the commissioners feel like we need to take a break since it is nine o'clock?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, uh, Smith, I forgot to circle back to our applicant team. They do have five minutes remaining.
I'm very sorry. Thank you. Miss Allen, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we, we appreciate the time. We appreciate the comments that we've heard from the, uh, from, from the commenters. Uh, at this point, I don't, I don't think there's anything for us to add. We'd certainly be happy to answer any questions from, uh, from the commissioners, of course. Um, but at this point, we have, we have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercedes. Okay, now we pull away from, uh, from all that and now back to us. Do, uh, any of you guys feel like we need a break, Commissioner Mazza?
I certainly do. I'd like to take a break for 10 minutes, please.
All right. The rest of our crew all good with this? Okay, 10 minutes it is.
Here Smith, you've closed the public hearing, right? So.
We'll close the public hearing and, uh, we'll go to, uh, back to the table, but we will take a break now for anything we need to take a break for.
Nobody, nobody, uh, please don't contact the commissioners and everyone mute themselves and turn their camera.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all back. So this brings us back to us and Commissioner comments, if I'm not mistaken. Commissioner Mazza, go ahead.
I just have a couple of staff questions. We never got to hear from Rob DeBeau. So, and I think that's a necessary part of this. So if he's still here, I'd like to ask him a couple of questions. Is he?
I see his name down there, yes.
Okay, Rob, I noticed in the staff report that part of the project is to close the parking on the south side of Morningview for truck turnarounds. And I wonder if you'd reviewed that and whether or not the city is considering no parking on the south side of Morningview under normal circumstances to, to alleviate the danger we have had there continuously for 20 years.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about and, and I just want to reassure you that we are still kind of working with the school district and reviewing their traffic plan. We've had a lot of comments. We're still going back and forth on a lot of the traffic issues with their, with the proposed development. So, so yes, we are still looking at everything. There's, there's a number of issues and we're trying to still get it worked out.
And those will be resolved by the time it goes to City Council?
I hope so. That's my plan.
Does any part of this change in the school have any, do they have any control over street parking? Normal street parking? What? No, but the city could say no south side parking because of jaywalking?
That would probably be something that I'd probably have to work with Richard and the planning staff on any type of regulations for parking over there, but that is something we would have to look at as a group to see what can be done.
And is there a local traffic study for that, that neighborhood or is it global?
What do you mean?
Well, part of this whole debate is traffic on Clover Heights, traffic on these, these streets around. Is there a traffic study on that for you to review?
Yes. Yeah. So that's what we're working with the, with the school district on their traffic analysis, specifically on those neighboring streets, the residential streets, especially with the proposed parking lot off of, off of Clover Heights. There's a lot of traffic data that we're analyzing and looking at the intersection and seeing what type of mitigation measures if that would be appropriate for those impacts.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question for Richard, I believe. Or maybe Trevor. These, this is like a 10-year project. How long is the EIR? And it also requires another bond to be passed. How long does the EIR last? When does it get stale? I mean, you know, we just, we had one project built in town that said traffic hadn't changed in 25 years. Well, at some point, traffic's going to change or something's going to change. So is this EIR? Could they build this high school 40 years from now using that EIR?
But once you have the EIR in place, what's really going to happen is the entitlements are going to expire, you're going to come back and get new entitlements. So there's been some kind of change, you know, that's how it would, it would be dealt with, you know, and, and when they come forward with a new proposal, then, you know, there needs to be an addendum or something changed to the EIR. If there was a kind of fundamental change from what was studied, that's when it would be dealt with.
So say, say Phase Three CDP comes in and it's somebody makes the claim the EIR is too old, then they have to do a new one?
Well, when they come out the, the phase, if they come out the Phase Three CDP, at that point, you're going to study the project and you're going to consider whatever environmental impacts, you know, are, are being proposed by it. If there's been some kind of changes and they need to redo something done in the EIR, then they would need to. But if the conditions are fundamentally the same, then you don't make them redo the, the work that's not necessary.
Well, my question is not the conditions of what's being built, the conditions around it. They said exactly the same project, but it was 25 years from now.
It would be something that we'd have to deal with whenever the CDP comes in for that phase. And analyzing whether the EIR is appropriate or needs an addendum or any other types of changes based on what's being proposed.
Okay. And then the, the, all the code changes we make, they're good forever until changed, correct?
If you're talking about the, the LCP amendment goes through and if the general plan amendment and the, the specific plan map and text amendment, yes, those are permanent. There's no time limitation on those. Once those are in, that will, that will be alter, alterations in the city's LIP and its municipal code that are permanent.
And we're not changing the, how long does CDP last in this project?
Well, CDP, once it, once the construction happens, you know, then it's, you know.
No, but say they, they got a CDP and waited seven years to start building. The bond issue didn't pass or something.
Well, the CDP is not before us right now. So if there's a, an expiration date attached to that, that's something that the planning commission or the council will deal with as a condition of that project. It's not part of the, the, the plan, you know, what's being proposed here tonight.
Oh, no, I understand that, but we have limitations and the CDP is what, five years and three extensions and blah, blah, blah.
That is the standard. If, if, if the commission or the, the council, whoever is then, ends up being the decision maker, decides that a different period is appropriate for this, you know, they have the ability to make a change to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Wettin? Muted.
Sorry about that. Perhaps this is a question for Richard. I'm assuming that, you know, if we pass the specific plan that, you know, Phase Two, Three, Four come along, conditions change, lower enrollment, whatever the case is that if, you know, if at that time we wanted to have a lower intensity project, I mean, there's no problem with that. I mean, we're approving the, you know, today's project, but as those CDPs come up, it could be a less intense project if it were, if that were warranted. Am I right about that?
Trevor, it looked like you were going to jump in there, but that, that's correct. Your, this specific plan is something they could build up to. Once the, when I say up to, meaning that the specific plan allows for certain heights or certain the specific plan allows for certain heights or certain sizes. Uh, but if the, once the projects come before you for the coastal development permit, you're looking at the merits of that project in light of the specific plan today. And you know, you're, you're, you have an opportunity to opine on those at, at a later time, right? And given the circumstances at that time.
Yeah, Richard's correct. You're, you're approving the maximum amount of development that they're proposing. If they don't want to take full advantage of it, they don't have to.
Thanks.
Question on that. Commissioner Maza?
But we are approving, say we say a height of forty five feet. They're the one that has to ask for less. We, if this passes and they, and there's six hundred students, they could still come in and say, I want a forty five foot building. And it would be under the code. Is that correct? And we don't have the ability to change that.
What you're proposing here are changes to this, to the municipal code and the LCP and those will remain. The findings will still need to be made for that. Um, you know, you still be able to make, need to make the coastal development permit findings in order to allow any particular proposed development.
But it's just like a house at eighteen feet. You have the right to build it at eighteen feet. Uh, whether or not it's as big as it used to be or not, right?
Yeah, I mean
In other words, they're the one that determines.
The applicant.
It's clear. They're the one that determines how big they want to build it. Once we say it can be forty five feet, it can be forty five feet. No matter what size the school is.
You, you will be making changes that will change the new maximums, but there still are findings that would need to be made in order for any of that to be approved. You don't just decide it, I wanna just, you know, make a random, you know, building over here and, and it has other types of impacts and it's not compatible with um, you know, the required findings.
Okay, but the finding would not be it's too tall. The finding would be something else.
Yeah, because if, if you can propose up to forty five, forty five feet in height, Renika, what are the, the findings that'd be required if, if they want to make a building that height in order for it to be approved under the specific plan?
Um, they would also have to include a site plan review. So even though we are, the school district is requesting a maximum, an increase in the maximum height, um, the projects will still have to require a site plan review approval for development above eighteen feet. So it'll be the CDP findings and the site plan review findings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, um, if there's no other questions. And what we've usually done in the past on something this complicated, we didn't fight over every issue. We made a, a motion that had all the issues. And then we deleted and added. So I'd like to make a motion, um, that we could all at least start out seconding. I, I'm willing to take any adds to it. And if we have a straw poll that there's two people that don't like it, take it off after discussion because we have to come down to a vote at the end and we want to have a motion to vote on. Um, so uh, hopefully we can get this seconded, we can get it all, we can go through each item, come to the end and say, yeah, we all have two, there's two votes on each one of these at least, hopefully three. And uh, we can just say yea or nay. So I'm gonna attempt to do that. If you want me to comment or you want to add motions, just go ahead. I'm just trying to get the process so we can do it. We'll be here until next Thursday if we do each item separately as a motion on each item. And this is where you've done this before. Um. So my motion is number one, that the city monitors the EIR. And I know people have spoken about that. But we did have a situation in this school where the school district spent six million dollars fighting pollution. The pollution turned in by a citizen, tried to arrest the citizen. And this answer, you gotta go to court, this doesn't work. So that's why I'm making that motion. Um.
You want to see Commissioner Maza if, if uh, the other commissioners are in agreement with that one? If you just wanna?
Well, I hope they raise their hand and say, you know, uh, what I'd like to do is go down the line and then we can discuss each one. Uh, leave it all sort of open so we can discuss it. I'd rather not discuss each one as we go. Uh, get them all out there and go down the line.
Because you're, you're gonna propose staff's recommendation with a number of changes. That's, that's where you're headed, right?
Yeah. And some of these may be staff's recommendations. This thing is so thick that, I mean, if staff tells me their, their recommendations, I believe them. Okay. But
I, I think, I think you can just see right now, if, if you have two other commissioners that want to include the, requiring the city to mo, uh, perform the monitoring functions required by the EIR.
What I'm saying is, I need a second. Okay?
Well, you, you don't need a second yet. You can, you can
That's what I'm saying is if we're going through this and two of you guys go, no, 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 no. Uh, and don't want to discuss it, then take it off the motion. But I think we should discuss each one and I think, I'm willing to discuss anything you want to put on there. Uh, I think each item takes more than a minute to discuss. And I'd just like to get them all out there and then we can go down each one and discuss them and pull them and add them.
So Commissioner Maza, how many items do you have?
Well, I'll tell you this. I have, right now I have what looks like around ten. Now, you guys will probably have more.
That looks like next Thursday to me.
No, 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 no. If you want to sit and discuss my first motion, that might take fifteen minutes. And then we have to say, okay, that's yes or no. Keep track of that. And we've done this many times. We did this on the motel. Okay? I mean, on Norm's hotel, we did twenty three items. We eliminated two and we passed it.
If, if, if you can either do it another way, we can go item by item with all three commissioners, or you can just get them all out and then we can go down the list.
Well, I'd like to get them all up because this is a complicated situation and one item may eliminate another item.
Okay, I got the first one.
Yeah, okay, um.
So the floor is yours. Go ahead and go off on your list.
To make it very simple, be, before I make my motion, I'd like to ask Steve Masetti one question. Is he available?
Yes.
There he is.
Um. A lot of the controversy here is the parking lot on Clover Heights. It's only fourteen spaces. It involves a lot of lighting and this and that and the other thing that's gonna go into all these motions. Are you guys stuck on having a parking lot on Clover Heights of fourteen cars?
Well, th- thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maza. Um, if I'm not mistaken, and I believe, I mean, I'm operating under the assumption that Mr. Lukoff was speaking for his immediate surrounding community. I believe I heard him say that he would be uh, amenable to including only the handicap parking and no lighting. And I can speak for the district to say that if, if that were something that the, the commission uh, were to push for, we would be willing to pull back our request to only handicap parking necessary for the uh, the fieldhouse area and no lighting.
But he was also speaking of it being on the street.
Right. So I, I think that's something we would work with Public Works on. You know, I, I, there's an issue with, and I don't want to get out of bounds here, but I, and I, and I'm sure that um, uh, Mr. DeBoe could speak further about this, but there is an issue with uh, fire, uh, fire truck turnaround and the radius that they need. So I wouldn't want to commit to saying we would keep it on the cul-de-sac. But I would be willing to, we would be willing to commit to uh, eliminating, well, not including any lighting and eliminating everything other than the accessible parking spaces.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind when I make the motion. And thank you. Okay, so my first motion is that the city monitors the EIR. And speak up if you have a big problem with it. Okay, um. Let's see. That, my second motion is that the Public Works Department review the traffic plan for the local area before it goes to the city council. These are all recommendations, by the way, not motion. I guess they're motions, but they're motions of recommendation. The third one is and this we may have to discuss. I hope we have time to discuss it thoroughly rather than just say no. But I would like to have the buildings twenty eight feet with a six foot, with a thirty six foot maximum with a variance. The reason I'm saying that is as a planning commissioner, I've never had more calls than the sentiment. This is the rural section of Malibu, not the ci, center of Malibu. Number two, I'd like to keep the dark sky ordinance for the whole campus. Um, I know there's been a lot of objections, but the EIR and the staff recommended that since the project was so far in the future, there are solutions that may come up and variances are available. But to, to eliminate the uh, dark skies right now is not recommended by staff, is not recommended by the ERB and pepperdine is EIR certified. I mean, dark skies certified. They have two poles, major poles, okay? They qualify. Number three, and this is partly a question. The way I read the language on the field light, it said that the field lights. Someone talking to me? Okay, the field lights, it says, uh, that the field light agreement will stay in use, uh, will remain in effect. But I am not sure, and maybe staff can answer me. Is the use of the field, the field lights? There's a schedule on how many you can use them, when you can use them. Is it just the lights or the total agreement? Does anybody know that? Well, my motion is that the total agreement, which is on, which is mentioned on page ten or thirty one, will not be changed. Okay?
Renika, do, do you understand this, what he's talking about here?
The field light agreement will not be changed.
Yeah, I don't, that's not a part of this application. It doesn't propose any changes to that agreement.
Well,
That would be a condition for the, the CDP. It's not part of the specific plan.
Well, it's in on page ten or thirty one, it says. It says when the school facilities are not in use, are not scheduled for school sponsored events, district wide events, the civic senate senate permit contains certain community organizations to utilize facilities opinion that Santa Monica City, blah, 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 and permitted community use in common areas. As permitted under the two nineteen master agreement between SMM and, and the city of Malibu regarding to joint use. And I, it was under the heading of lights. I just wanted to make sure it covers everything. Cause that was a long fought battle. So if it's irrelevant, it's irrelevant. Uh, but I'm making, putting that in the motion. Number four, is these, the school district said that there, there are two electronic signs are only eight feet tall, but these things are fifteen feet by seven feet. Electronic displays like a Dodger Stadium. And I believe modern electronics and the dark skies law and the fact that Morning View is a rural street that is rarely traveled at night. Uh, these signs should be facing towards the school rather than towards the street. So people can read them as they leave the parking lot rather than cruise up and down Morning View. Uh. So that's my motion there. Um. Now on the grading, I would not like to, I would keep it under the CDP application. The maximum amounts of grading, which we can give variances on. Uh, eleven thousand cubic yards without knowing what is being built. And it doesn't appear to me that they've looked at understructure grading. I think they've counted understructure grading, which is exempt. So it's too wide an area not to be considered when a CDP comes up. So I would like to eliminate that section. Uh, let's see. Okay, and then, um, number, I guess it's eight, is that all entrances, all public entrances to the school and the parking lot for pedestrians, pedestrian and auto access shall be taken off Morning View Drive. And the reason for that is basically partly the shooting last week, school security and the fact that on the um, motor barn is accessed off of Morning View Drive. It's no longer accessed off of merit. So you have all useful accesses right now coming off Morning View Drive and we don't need any future strange accesses coming off side streets. Um, for safety reasons.
John, I, can you clarify, are you saying you want all entrances on, remaining on Morning View Drive only?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Uh, and there really aren't any others right now. I just don't want to have somebody coming off uh, Harvester or something, some other access added later. Um. Mainly for security, this is a fifty two acre site. Okay, uh, let's see, twenty seven thirty one. I'm trying to follow as closely as what they do with, with giving us the ability under CDPs to change things. Um. Okay, and then, uh, wait a second, I got lost here. Okay, we already got the EIR under, under the city. Um. Already got dark skies. And and got crazy. That is, that's my proposal. Um.
You, do you?
That's complicated. That's my motion. I'd like a second so we can discuss it. I would like to ask anybody who wants to make additions to make them and then we'll see if we can get a second on the whole thing.
Do, do you want me to go down them? I have them all listed if you want to just go. Okay. So the motion will be staff's recommendation, but then these are the following proposed changes and then the commissioners can indicate whether they're in favor of them or not. Uh, the first is that the city would perform these other, you're gonna recommend to the council that these changes be made. And the first is that the city performs.
I want to add one thing. I want to discuss these. If anybody has any questions. Okay, I don't want to just mix them without any discussion, if I could. But yes, you can read what I proposed.
Okay, so the, the first uh, proposed change is to recommend that the city performs the monitoring functions required by the EIR.
Correct. Correct.
Are all the commissioners in agreement on making that recommended change?
Well, no, you don't understand the process I'm trying to
You just want to be in a little list that's small, see if they're correct for you and then make the motion, see if you have.
I want to, I want to, I, I want you to clarify my motion and then I want to go through each one and see if we get a second. So we can get a motion that includes all of them that we can vote on that's been seconded by somebody. Just so it happens in this case, we need two votes.
Yeah, if you have a second, then you have a complete, you mean, you're gonna have
You, we can't second each, each of your individual items on this one motion. We're making one motion.
Yeah, so the, the process is either you can make a complete motion, Commissioner Maza, and, and then see if you get a second, or you can go through and basically take a straw poll and each of the, the changes.
Let's do a straw poll, but I'd like to leave it open for discussion. So at the end, we're gonna need a second on the whole motion.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if, if you had, if there was another commissioner that was interested in adding the first condition, which would be, sorry, the first recommendation, which would be that to have the city perform the monitoring functions required by the EIR.
Right, but what I want to do, let me say this again, is I don't want to go down a list and go, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. I'd like to understand the problems and we can discuss them on each item. If, and if somebody wants to add If, and if somebody wants to add another item to discuss, so we will have a string of motions, then we can go down each one of. They're interrelated.
This is the opportunity for the other commissioners to indicate they're interested in it or have further discussion.
Correct, but I want further discussion.
If we agree to it.
Well, you should, if you're a proper commissioner, discuss what you agree to. That's all I'm saying.
Doesn't mean I have to discuss.
Chair, Chair Smith and Commissioner Wedden, do you want to discuss each of these items go through, or do you want him just to create a motion that then ask for a second?
Well, I.
I want to do, on the motel, okay, we went through, we listed twenty-three items.
Hang on, he's talking, he's talking.
Well, I I don't know, I I don't know how you're gonna get a second on, on, on the. Motion with, with all of these items. We're gonna have to discuss them, and I think some of them are gonna get. Tossed if you're gonna have a successful motion. Uh, so however you want to discuss them, whether you want to list them all first and then discuss them one by one or.
Or. I'd like to do because. Obviously, if you can't get two votes on all of them. It doesn't pass. Okay?
Right.
That's, that's all, but I don't want to just go, oh, I don't like that one, and then go on to the next one. I'd, I'd like to have this actually have a.
Well, we don't have to discuss them if we don't feel like discussing it. I mean, you know what I mean? It's like, I, I.
I like to tell you, we've done this many times before. If you want to do it another way, fine. It's just trying to get them all discussed, that's all.
Okay.
You can do it however you want to do it.
The, the first item again is having the city perform the monitoring function part by the E I R. Do either of the commissioners want to discuss or indicate they would be, they would support having that recommendation added?
Uh, I would support it.
Okay.
So the next one.
The next one is uh, to recommend that only handicap parking and no lighting. The, sorry, only handicap parking be allowed in the fillery lights lot, and that no lighting be allowed on that lot.
No. That's not my motion.
Okay, what is it?
My, my motion is covered by another, that, that was what Steve was said, he said. Uh, it is covered by the access motion farther down the line.
So.
One at point of ingress egress to the school.
Okay, so I will, I will remove that. The next one is. Uh, to recommend that Public Works review the parking impacts of the project.
Now, this is something that Director Devoe already told us that he's doing, so there's no reason to have been here to talk about it or vote on it. This is something he has to do anyway.
So this is a recommendation. He doesn't have to do squat, okay? We are recommending to the city council. That they consider his. His uh, input because we did not get it, okay? That's why this is in there. He did, if he's required to give it to us. He didn't do it. So we're saying, yes, he should be required to give it to the city council. That's why.
Which he's already stated he's going to do. He's already stated that, that he's gonna do it. We don't need to make that, uh, just, you know, just hammer him on the head and tell him.
No, you don't understand. There are certain requirements to pass this. That's one of them. Okay?
He's our director of public works. He's well aware of that.
I understand this, but you give him legislative authority and he does not have it. The city council needs to know this. Okay, that's why it's in there. It's not, if he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it. But it's harder than.
You're gonna do this. Am I not correct? This is something you're gonna bring back for council.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm actually fine with John saying, I, I think that's, it's, I, I think that's, that gets to the. It's, I actually, I, I in, in favor of what John's coming up with.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think it's necessary. It's up to Commissioner.
I think it's, I, I think it's a, I, I think it's perfectly fine. I, I don't, it's um. I, I think I know exactly what he's coming from and, and I have no issues with having that. Uh, um, in, in the recommendation, that's, it, it's what we're gonna do, and it just brings a light that this is an important thing that we need to bring up and. Talk about at the, at the um, council level. So, yeah, I, I'm perfectly fine.
Okay.
Chair Weddon, are you?
I'm good, I'm good with that one, too.
Okay, so that would, uh, that would be recommend that Public Works analyze the parking impacts of the project. Okay, the next one is. To not allow the changes to height, so buildings would be twenty-eight feet. Uh, Chair Mazza, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mazza, you had said that you would want to cap a thirty-six feet with a variance. You can't cap. Variances, someone can always request a variance. So basically, your motion on this one would be to um, maintain the current height limits in the city, correct?
Correct. The reason I'm doing that is because of the fact that a school. Was built in the civic center. At thirty-five feet, eight inches that. Is in a commercial zone that, that had great objection by the public. And therefore, the planning commission should consider those when it comes before the C D P.
I, for one, am not. For your motion.
Yeah, I, I can't support that either. I, those buildings need to be that height. For, you know, for the facilities that they're uh, gonna house and, uh, you know, you gotta have. Regulation height for volleyball in the gym. You gotta have a certain height for the uh, for the uh. Uh, performing arts, and I think it's, you know, not only is it for the school, it's for the whole community. Uh, and uh, I, I, you know, I think we need it, otherwise I don't think they'd be asking for it.
Well, do you realize that the? Santa Monica City College. Has an auditorium in it. Has eighteen feet height ceilings on their classrooms. And that the requirement for a volleyball court is twenty-three feet, not forty-five feet.
I don't believe. But it's, it's, it's all the other stuff that's gotta be above. I, I mean, uh, Commissioner Smith knows more about it than I do, but I think it's the trusses. And the, the, you know, the space for all of the ducting and wiring and all that kind of stuff that adds the additional height.
Well, how is that any different than the college?
Well, there's five feet of it they need for the.
They don't have a volleyball court.
They need five feet of that for the roof. So forty-five down, you got, you're at forty feet. So you're only four feet higher than what you're talking about at the Santa Monica College.
What you realize is. When you do this, if the council passes it, which I would be surprised if they did, when the pushback they got from the. The Nantucket Light and all that other stuff down there. Is you are saying, if you want forty-five feet, you can have it. Okay, and this is a, almost a five-story building. So you can have a volleyball game. Okay, you have to realize proportions here. The college has. Eighteen-foot community room on top of which it has a another. Large auditorium, and it still only hits thirty-six feet. Okay, and, and that's by far the largest, tallest building in central Malibu. The general plan requires that anything west of. Canaan Doom Road be rural, rural. Okay, and you're talking five-star buildings. On a fifty-three acre parcel.
We're also talking about a building that's already on site at forty-one feet. So. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, okay, and. So you want to take that out? You guys.
Absolutely.
You're gonna live with a forty-five foot building.
Because we already have a forty-one foot building.
It's.
The rest are just roof, roof material. That's it. That's what it takes to.
Report, but it's, you guys obviously voted that way. You didn't read the staff report on the fact that it's buried. But okay, what's the next one?
Okay, the next one is that the dark sky ordinance applies to the whole campus, including the pool.
Yeah, and the reason I say that is. As I said before, Pepperdine. Whole campus is certified. Dark Sky compliant. Two Olympic pools. Giant campus. Uh. There are ways to light swimming pools. In the county of Los Angeles, believe me, Pepperdine and a lot of other city buildings have gotten approval under the city. Codes. To do what they did. And. This is the darkest place in Malibu. It's, it's. Malibu Park is even darker than Point Doom. And so, if we're gonna have a successful dark sky system. Eight years from now, when they go to build this pool, they can figure out how to have shielded lights. Or. They can get a variance around it, but to approve it right now, saying, don't bother. Means you're not gonna get it. And.
So you're saying that we, we don't believe the E I R because they say in the E I R that it's not achievable. And but so.
Oh, no, they don't. And the E I R recommends against getting rid of it. The E I R, I can give you the page number and the sighting. And the E R B also recommended against it. Both.
It, can, can somebody give us a ruling on that, uh, while we're discussing it, uh, Richard or, or Renika or somebody?
Let me, let me just, I'm gonna go back to when they, when all this started with the school and the parking lot and the lights. The state of California, the, stepped in, the, the school system of the state of California stepped in and said. You need to have X amount of lumens. To be safe. Bottom line, safety trumps everything. So whatever that would be for students and our population that want to use the pool. It's gotta be safe. Now, the lights aren't on all night. They shut them off at eight o'clock right now.
Yes, you realize that that's.
Hang on. So I just remember the parking lot thing, and it was a big thing, and I, I understand that. I've learned a lot since I've, since that time. But I also know that there are rules with the state of California with schools that you gotta have a certain amount of light, so it's safe. That's kind of end of story on that.
No, it's not end of story because the football field is dark sky compliant today. It has no light trespass. And in on page sixty-five of the E I R, under is, under mitigating measures. It says, pool and pool deck lighting shall require. A site plan review to determine consistency with the dark sky ordinance. The E I R, the E R B. Vote was dark sky compliance. You have it backwards. It's right in here. It's on, one's on page sixty-five, and I gotta find the other one. This is in here. It's not the other way around.
Um, Commissioner Mazza, I wanted to add a little bit of clarity on that issue. The E I R. Used the dark sky ordinance as the threshold for lighting. But as you can recall from the recent deliberations on the gas stations and their needing to exceed. Um, the threshold for lighting. The planning department wasn't a hundred percent um, in agreement with the use of dark skies. Um, the dark sky ordinance to establish a threshold for aesthetics. Um, so that's one thing um, that uh, the planning department differs from the findings in the E I R. Um, secondly, the planning department, rather than allowing the pool lighting just to blatant, you know, blatantly exceed the threshold. Were simply um, suggesting that the pool lighting require a site plan review. To deviate. From the dark sky ordinance. Um, that is um, a standard that's currently laid out um, in the municipal code. And with the site plan review process, it allows the school district to further demonstrate. At the time of the full design of the pool lighting, that there's no other way they can provide safety pool lighting with. Uh, within the, the, the confines of the dark sky ordinance.
Except, except, Renika, you did not watch the last city council meeting where the city council changed the dark sky ordinance. Changed it to consider that. It's in the law. We're, what we're trying to pass here is what the city council decided last week. Okay? That's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to do. And so by saying, well, they don't have to follow the dark sky ordinance, that's a lot different. The city council allowed every single gas station to have a variance, every single commercial building in town. Okay? That's the dark sky ordinance. But that's a lot different than passing something that says, ah, forget it. Okay?
Well, maybe there's a compromise. Uh. I, I, I propose, what about having it uh. Signed off by Jim Benya. Uh, whether it's dark sky, if it, if it can't be dark sky, then he has to approve whatever. You know, the, the minimum lighting is allowable by all the agencies that, what, you know, have to weigh in on it.
Well, we could do that, but it's already passed. He's already proposed this, and it passed last week at city council. Every commercial building in town. Okay?
Director Malika?
On the dark skies issue, so in the dark skies ordinance seventeen dot forty-one and oh nine oh. States, and I think this is what you're getting to Vice Chair Smith. That the dark skies ordinance cannot be in conflict with any other state or, or laws, uh, state or federal laws. So much like the dark skies lighting at Tranqus Country Market. You've got. Everything for the most part turning off at night with the exception, I think of four lights and the, the light next to the A T M there. And it's because under the, the bank code. Uh, banking and something code in our um. Public resources code, you have to provide a safe path to travel from the parking space to the A T M all times of, of night. There is a state code that states that the pool area, I guess, I forgot exactly. It's in the building code. Uh, but I believe it's, Stan could, I'm sure recite it, because he and I did discuss this. Uh, the pool area, essentially the deck, anywhere that you've got people. Uh, water and deck, that needs to be lighted, and I, and the problem is, the reason why the school district. Is doing what they're doing here and not asking, and asking for this. Is they did not want to go the route that we offered them, which was to utilize that code section. And it's because unfortunately, the state code. Just says it has to be lit safely. It doesn't actually say X amount of lumens. Uh, there is no. That's the concern Stan had for, uh, from the school, was that there, there's no exact quantity of lumens that need to be provided. It's, it's, it's vague. Uh, so that's where we are when it comes to our dark skies ordinance and why they're asking for what they're asking for.
But, Richard. It does not the dark sky ordinance provide for that. Do not they get to have a teller machine? Did not the city council approve all of this? And change the dark sky code because people thought it was. Not possible for a gas station to comply. Yes, they, they did. They changed all of this. What we're saying is the school district now gets to disguise, decide what dark sky is. Our dark sky code says. You have certain amount of trespass, you have certain amount of things you can do, and, and. You're bound by these other laws. And Ben is the judge, okay? He's our consultant. But that's a really big difference, and that's why I'm making this motion is. You cannot turn over to a user. The determination on what dark sky is.
Well, that's why I'm saying have, have, have Benya be the one to sign off on it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's already in our law. If it's under the, if this is covered by the dark sky ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, then it, then it's, it's under, now you can't say Benya because he might die, okay?
Right, or somebody.
It's, it's under the city purview, the same way they're determining whether a gas station qualifies. They go out there and they take a picture, they do this, they do that, but we've already covered that all under the dark sky law. When you say. Yeah, except the school's different. Uh, then you have no law.
But the school is different.
It is not.
It's got the state. You've got one more entity in here.
No, 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 you don't understand. The dark sky law passed by the city council. Before the coastal commission. Says you've got to follow the state requirements. Okay? You've got to follow the state requirements. That's in our law. The difference here is they want to say. We don't have to follow any law. And that's, that's a huge difference. And you get, we get all kinds of complaints from the neighbors that they leave it on all night or this or that. That's what you're voting for when you vote for it's not covered by dark skies law.
So, so let me clarify, it, you know, so I can potentially support it. So, so let me clarify it, you know, so I can potentially support it. Can you, let me, okay? If, if what you're saying is the dark, the way the dark sky uh, ordinance is, is that it makes exception for state law or any other entity that uh, it has a variance to our city, our normal city dark sky code.
Any entity that is superior to us in the legal system.
So we would be, so the, our dark, dark sky would technically cover these, let's call them exceptions like uh, you know, a health and safety issue for a swimming pool.
We also have a mechanism if you violate it. If, if we pass this without a dark sky law, there's no mechanism. They could turn on a searchlight.
Hang on, Commissioner Maza, we have Mr. Masetti. Go ahead, Mr. Masetti. Can you unlock in there? Rebecca, please?
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner Mazza, Commissioner, and Commissioner Smith. So, um, first of all, the, the district is committed to, to reducing um, light pollution as much as possible. Uh, I, we are also willing to commit to meet with um, Jim Benya. And I, in fact, I was over the weekend texting with a member of the Malibu Community Alliance. Uh, we're absolutely willing to do that when it's time. I mean, you know, we're talking about a, a project that is in a much later phase. So, uh, we, we are willing to commit to doing that. Um, the, the county department of health, which I believe is a, you know, if you were to look at the ranking of agencies is um, uh, I don't know, an overriding agency actually permits the use of the pool. So we're, we're required to comply with, with their requirements and, and of course, the state requirements that um, Richard has, has referenced. Uh, but we're, one, one thing I would suggest is if it's possible, um, our, our uh, pool and lighting consultant Dennis Berkshire uh, is, is on the line. And I think he could probably address it with a lot more authority than I can. Um, so he's listed as Dennis Berkshire A D G.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
If Pepperdine, if the Santa Monica City Colleges can qualify under our dark sky rule, Pepperdine qualifies under their own dark sky law written by Jim Benya, why can't you?
Well, certainly. He didn't say that. He said they're willing to work with us and it's a long way down the road. By the time you get to it, they'll talk about it. Let's hear it from Mr. Berkshire. Go ahead, Mr. Berkshire.
Evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My firm Aquatic Design Group is an architectural engineering firm that specializes in public swimming pools. And we design about eighty percent of all the public high school pools in California. And as has been stated, the, the issue we have is that the California Title twenty-four Health and Safety Code requires that pools be lit for safety for use of lifeguards to determine if there would be a bather that's um, in distress underwater. The code does not, um, as was stated earlier, does not give us an actual lumens or uh, degree of lighting. But the issue that we run into when we talk about um, dark sky compliance is that for lighting of a swimming pool, well, first of all, if I may take a step back, the state of California through the Division of State Architects classifies this swimming pool as a classroom. As a classroom, we're required to provide safety egress lighting. So then in the event of an emergency, everyone can get out of that pool area to a public right of way to potential safety. And in California, we know that um, with this, we look at, at things such as the, the C I F, um, the National Federation for State High Schools, that suggests that a high school pool to operate safely should operate at fifty foot candles of illumination. Um, if we look at the um, uh, Illuminating Engineers Society of Northern America, they recommend that a high school operating for public swimming, for swim teams and swim practice, that they operated a minimum of twenty foot candles for safety. And if we're using it for nighttime water polo where balls are being chucked around the, the pool, that it be lit to a minimum of thirty foot candles. And one of the challenges we face, when we talk about the um, issue with dark skies, is that we know that the light flux angle and the surface reflection become an issue for swimming pools. In other words, this isn't a football field where the light is absorbed into the field. Now, the new lighting that's available for public swimming pools certainly is very targeted lighting, so it doesn't spill. It also is all down lighting. However, when it hits the water, it wants to reflect back up. Now, to try to counterbalance that, number one, we go to greater underwater light, and the more underwater light we have, the more we can help negate some of that glare. But the second issue is the um, angle of incidence. And that is the um, the degree that the reflection will have from the water is based on that angle of incidence. So what that's saying is that basically you want your light directly overhead the water. And if it's directly overhead, all of the light would penetrate the water and would not reflect. However, if we have twenty foot poles, if we have poles that are lower in height, then it's a lower angle of incidence of that light hitting the pool and we get greater reflection. So in twenty foot candle lighting, for example, in a swimming pool, we can usually accomplish that in a twenty to twenty-five foot light pole. But if we're going to get to that thirty foot candle, it now means that we're looking at stadium level lighting. And so because of that, we know that under the current standards for dark skies, with that reflectivity, it's not going to comply to be able to operate the pool safely. Now, we can show where it doesn't bleed off of the pool, off to adjoining um, properties and all of that so that we can operate. But again, what we're, we're dealing with is what's required for health and safety, um, as was noted, that's going to be um, uh, reviewed by the county environmental health as a means to be able to operate. And if we don't meet that minimum standards, then the county health will issue a notice of occupancy, a permit for use, saying you simply cannot use this pool after dark. And looking at how California is changing the school hours, we know that school uses are going to continue to get into dark times. Uh, whether it's both for water polo, for swimming, or for physical education, which again is part of the Ed, California Education Code.
Well, can I ask you a question? Uh, you're talking fifty foot candles. Our maximum's two and a half. You're talking twenty times what we allow. Twenty times. In, in one of your scenarios and fifteen times in another scenario, have you ever designed a pool that is dark sky compliant?
No.
Okay. Did you design Pepperdine's pool?
No.
How, how did Pepperdine get a license from the county of Los Angeles?
Again, you're asking me to, to guess as to what it is, what it does or doesn't comply with. What I can tell you is.
It applies with the two point five foot candles and it got a license.
Then it can't be used at night.
It is used at night all the time.
Then it's not two and a half foot candles.
It is two and a half foot candles. That's.
Well, there you go. I, I can tell you that the county environmental health will not allow you to use it other than safe egress at two and a half foot candles.
So I, so you're saying though, that you're saying this is a classroom. And there's, so every classroom in this school is going to have up to fifty foot candles.
No, no, no. Please don't try to put words in my mouth. What I said is it's treated like a, a classroom. And as a classroom, it's required to have emergency egress lighting by the state of California. In the event of a shooting incident, God forbid, that we have to allow these students and faculty to be able to get out of that area safely to a public right of way. So that's the minimum standard by California Education Code. Then we get into the program that by county environmental health, if we want to safely use it and say we have swim teams, swim practices or swim meets, then the standard is by the international, um, the Illumination Engineering Society of North America, that it gets lit to a minimum of twenty foot candles.
Right.
And if we have balls being passed around, which makes it more vertical rather than flat of a swim meet, required to go to a minimum of thirty foot candles. And that's what we've been talking with the district to date is that twenty to thirty, thirty foot candle range. Knowing that if we go to the National Federation of State High School, they're even recommending upwards of fifty foot candles.
Yeah, and, and we also, but, Richard, do we have anywhere in Malibu, anywhere, one building, that's fifty foot candles? We measured the, the gas stations, which is supposedly lit up like anything. They weren't even close. Okay? Now, this is my problem. When you say you eliminate a law that is made to have dark skies, and then you can say, well, we'll eliminate it. And they're telling us, oh, we listened to some foot, uh, some national high school thing instead of the uh, the, the standard used by Jim Benya. We have twenty times as much light as any other building in Malibu. Twenty times. So this is where you cannot turn over a law like a dark sky law to, for anybody to interpret and, and not have any power of the city to enforce. You cannot do it because obviously this is way beyond, way, not, not double, triple, quadruple, ten times.
Okay, you made, you got it, Commissioner Maza. Commissioner Wetton, go ahead.
So, so Commissioner Maza, are you, are you proposing that they nix the swimming pool?
No, I am saying that there are swimming pools in Malibu, every swimming pool, by the way. But there's swimming pools in Malibu at a school of seven thousand students that qualify. Okay? And our law is written saying you have to use certain types of fixtures, you have to, you have to follow the county codes, you have to follow the state codes, you have to get all your permits, but you got to follow our laws.
So, so theoretically, we'd be okay. We'd be okay if we said, well, we, you know, we want it to be dark sky compliant because in our dark sky ordinance, it allows for the other agencies' requirements, right? The state and county requirements, right?
That's my motion. I just.
Okay, I, I mean, I get it. If that's true, and I think, you know, I, I'd love to have somebody else just verify that that's how it, how it actually is written because I, I don't know. But if that's true, then I think we're okay. We, it can be dark sky compliant. Anybody, Richard, can you verify that or?
I think there's two things at play here. So one is I'm hearing from their lighting engineer, the words of reflectivity. So that would be the water, light coming off the water. And then I think the other issue is light spill, which that would be the issue uh, that was addressed on the sports field lighting. They, they, the lights were aimed in such and fashion and, and, and shielded so that they could um, you know, light up the field to what they needed, but preserve the dark areas around it. So with this, what, what the school is asking for is essentially uh, you, you, as you heard it, they haven't designed this yet. Um, I believe they, to them to be sensitive to what the concerns of the residents are. However, they're just asking um, you know, for a different standard to go by. But I think that you know, like I said, there's two concerns here, which I do believe, you know, the city's lighting consultant could definitely be involved in any future reviews and work with them to see that they achieve their lighting to meet, uh, as I mentioned, the, the county public health requirements uh, for the pools, they can get their occupancy, but then also make sure that it, you know, they're, they're lighting up the pool deck and the pool, not the surrounding area of, like the parking lot or other buildings.
But Richard, it was Mark's question was if we had a dark sky, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, if they were under our dark sky ordinance, and there were other ordinances that didn't allow them to follow our dark sky ordinance that are superior to ours, county, state, federal, then they are covered by our, they're okay with our plan. Our plan allows that. I mean, our, our law allows it. But I, my problem here is the reason why I want this ordinance in there is if you say, oh, ten years from now, they'll work with us and maybe they'll figure out a way to do it. What our law says is, here's our rules, figure out a way to do it or get a variance due to these other laws. That's really, really, really different than we'll work with you ten years from now. That's a super different. Because it's not part of the resolution, they are being the only square inch of Malibu that's being exempted. The only square inch. And we're talking gas stations, supermarkets, uh, I, a large school, a large uh, brand new, not even done yet, college that all qualify. And, and they qualify under our dark sky ordinance because they went through the rules and they, they got their licenses from the state or whatever they have to do. And they didn't decide.
Okay, all right.
We didn't.
Yeah, let me, let me ask a question here. I see a lot of names that are left on our board. Uh, we've got two pages of people. I guess my question is out of all these people I'm looking at, either Karen Lee maybe, or uh, who in this group that's still watching us tonight, by raising your hand, looks down at the high school right now at night and is able to see the pool? Is there anybody left watching the meeting tonight that can tell us that or tell me that? Is there anybody here to raise their hand to do that?
Of course not. It's ten thirty.
No, there's a lot of people on here, Commissioner Maza, and I was hoping that Terry Lukoff had still been on here, but um, I'm asking, hang on. The reason I'm asking is, if they're looking at what's there now, and we've had all these people have the Drummonds for, for one, obviously, and the Sea Wolves team, geez, eighty, eighty kids. So what are the lumens or whatever is the brightness there now? Obviously, I guess the community up there is okay with that. There's Mr. Masetti. Can you help me with that, please? We need to unmute Mr., there you go. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, what, what I can say is, I mean, I, I couldn't tell you what the lumens are right now, but what I can tell you is that the district did change out the lights on our existing pool to meet the dark spot, the dark skies uh, initiative and put in compliant lights. And the county came out and forced us to change them back because it was unsafe.
Steve, can you answer how many complaints you've gotten? How many times you've had to shut the lights off at midnight?
Yeah, there's a timing.
Neighborhoods, how many, how many, and the city, how many complaints the city's got uh, from neighbors?
Commissioner Maza, that's a fair point. And, and we, we do have a timing issue with the lights out there. Um, in that they can be left on, and that has happened. Um, and you know, we, I think the, the, this is outside my department, but I think the district has had to send out uh, their sports facilities, hmm, whatever their title is, to turn those lights off uh, at night. Um, you know, it, what I, what I can say is that as we go forward, we'll be putting in uh, controls on those lights so that that won't happen, that they'll, they'll be scheduled to go off. Um, you know, that maybe, I, I don't want to assume that we use musco lights, but it may be musco lights like we have on the field where they are uh, remotely controlled and can be scheduled to turn on and off.
All I know is I've gotten, somewhere in here was a complaint letter that showed the pictures of the lights. You know, this thing is a thousand pages.
Maybe we should ask Mr. Masetti's viewpoint on what, what, what he thinks about our, the condition of the pool complying with Malibu dark sky ordinance.
Well, what I'm hearing from our, uh, what I heard during this meeting from uh, the pool consultant that we have is that it, we, we could not be both dark skies compliant and safe. And if it comes to that, a, all of us, and I know I don't need to ask this. I know all of us say we need to be safe. So our commitment is to create a safe uh, condition. Um, but our further commitment is, we're going to work with, we're, we're, we're more than willing to work with Mr. Benya. I think his last name is Benya, right? Um, in order to uh, and, and we would do that, sorry, let me step back. We're more than willing to work with him at the beginning of that design process in order to work through this. Uh, we're going to get the lights as close as possible to dark skies compliant. But if we can't get there, we still need the lights so that, I mean, But if we can't get there, we still need the lights so that, I mean, look, I'm gonna, I'll say this as bluntly as possible. When, when this, the school needs the, the pool, we're gonna use the pool. And so we could probably get all of our uses in within the daylight hours. And that would leave zero time for the community. That is not what we want. We recognize that this is a community asset. And so our plan is to create a, a workable solution that. It may not be dark skies compliant, but is as close as we can get it. Um, that allows for uh, community and school use after daylight hours. Does that answer your question? I think it was Mr. Wetton that asked.
Yes, but, but I, you know, I'm still conflicted because Chairman Maza or Commissioner Maza. Believes that our dark sky ordinance allows for very, a variance to our normal dark sky, two and a half foot candles or whatever it is. When there is a situation like, uh, you know, a public space that uh is. Regulated by a, you know, a, a state or county or some other body. So if that's the case. You know, we should all be fine with it being dark sky compliant, because it means that we, you know. It uh, they'll be able to light it to whatever standard is required for safety. That's what my. You know, mind is telling me, but I, you know.
Sure, and I, I hear you. Um, I, again, I, I don't know that I'm the person to make that legal analysis of, of. Whether or not something that would be by itself technically not compliant is compliant because of that. And that, that may be Trevor or or Stan could help us with that.
Uh, uh, see, uh, I wanna make sure that everyone understands. The staff recommendation here and probably some of the thought process behind it. So under the staff recommendation, dark skies. Would still apply, but you would not only have the, you already have an out if it, if there's a state requirement. Um, that requires certain type of lighting that's on there. The issue here is that. It's sort of ambiguous, and that's the concern about what is, you know, safe lighting. Is it fifty foot candles, you know, as, as Commissioner Maza said? Was it twenty? I mean, wh- what is, is that it's a little bit ambiguous. And so the proposal from staff is that, that you could get. You could get an exception from that if you make a site plan review finding, which is different from a deviation finding. The deviation findings basically means you. You know, you can't comply with it. The site plan review findings are something that you are familiar with. You know, that it's, it, that is, you know, not gonna, it's gonna be consistent with the community, it's gonna have um. You know, you have five or seven different findings that need to be made for, in order to get a site plan review. So it allows. A different option to get it, to get um. Approval for lighting that can't meet the dark skies requirement. So that's the staff rec- recommendation. So it's sort of a middle ground between sort of what you're talking about. If you do just wanna require it to stick with the dark skies and require them to be get a, you know, deviation or a variance under the. The current plan, that is something you can do, or you can go with the district's um option. So you have a, a range, but yes, basically, there's three options that have been eliminated here, and you're just making a recommendation to the council about. Which place you wanna be in, or you think this should be.
Hang on, Commissioner Maza, I believe Mr. Macedi just, just explained to us that. They went to the dark skies light, changed the lighting, county came back out, made them change them back. And so whatever we are right now is probably what we're gonna be in the future.
Don't look words in his mouth, he did not say that.
Hang on. The good thing is, this will be a new school. And it's got new wiring and new controllers and new everything. So these lights will probably go off like at eight fifteen, so everybody can safely get out of the area. And they'll go off every night at eight fifteen, they won't be left on, and somebody has to drive from Al Hambr to shut them off at night. So, and we're talking a long ways down the road. So to me, okay, we can go with the dark skies. But we need to understand that somebody's gonna probably come along and. Tell us that there, that's not safe enough, you gotta go brighter. Mr. Brankwitz, go ahead.
Yes, hi. I, I, I just wanted to point out that the, uh, the, the code section that you're referring to. In the Malibu New York Code on Dark Skies, that seventeen point four one oh nine oh, conflicts with other laws. And it says, in the event the provisions of this chapter conflict with federal or state law. This chapter shall be applied in a manner intended to carry out all provisions of law to the maximum extent feasible. When there's irreconcilable conflict between the provisions of this chapter and the requirements of federal or state law. The provisions of federal or state law shall provide over the provisions contained in this chapter, only to the extent necessary. Avoid a violation of those laws. So there's two things wrong with this section. One is, it doesn't take into account local county law requirements for safety. And two, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't. It give us anything to work with when you're dealing with, with a provision of state law that doesn't have. A numerical number attached to it.
Well, let me just say that you just read what I said, okay? We have, in that law, it says. State law takes precedence. SoFi Stadium is not Malibu, okay? And it says, in our law. Passed by our city council, that you have the option of a deviation request. And in the case of a deviation request, you go to the city and say, I can't follow. The dark skies law for this reason. And Jim Benya makes a deviation report and the city votes on it. That's what our law says. It's already taken care of. Now, in the case of gas stations, they determined that there were five of six gas stations. They claimed they needed a deviation request. Rather than go through each one of them, they changed the law. Last week or two weeks ago, saying, okay. We're gonna change our law so they will no longer need a deviation request. But we have that provision, it's still in there. What we're saying when we say that the school district is, you decide. That means that we have lost all control. It's the only place in Malibu. Where you don't need a deviation request. You just do it.
What do you, what do you wanna do, Commissioner Wetton?
Uh, I, listen, it, I, 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 I think I have to agree with Commissioner Maza that I think we should keep it. You know, keep it in the dark sky. Worst case is, it's the most conservative position. You know, we're not the final say. I think we're safe if we. You know, if, if we go along with uh, making the, the whole campus dark sky compliant. I, I, I just don't see a lot of downside.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I, I don't wanna see a bunch of light either. What we've been concentrating, obviously, is the pool because it's such a. Uh, community situation. So, okay, so Commissioner Maza, here's where I'm gonna go with you on this. I'm gonna agree with this, and the fact that. They have the option, or if somebody comes and tells us, you gotta go brighter, they have to go brighter. That's, that's understood, correct?
That's, that's part of our dark skies law.
Okay, so that's, let's all three of us, I, I agree with this. We've talked through this, Lord knows, we've talked through this. Alright. I'll go with you on that one. Next, next item, Trevor.
Alright, um, the electronic display should face towards the school, not towards the streets.
And the reason I had put that in there is. Is the, we're, uh, this is a, these are nighttime displays. They're light, lighted. All of us are familiar with Morning View Drive. When the school's not in, in open, which is dark. There's nobody running up and down those streets, you know, trying to see the graphics of a. Whatever their mascot is running across the sign and this and that, but everybody who has to leave that school. Knows there's a, uh, a dance that night or whatever it is, okay? We're in the electronic age. We're not in the. We're not in the Las Vegas age, okay? This, this is. It's just makes sense. Now, I personally don't see why they need the signs. I think you sent an email to everybody and they know what's going on, but. That's not, that's not for me to determine, but to have two seven by fifteen foot signs. Lit up with graphics moving. Middle, all night long, in the middle of night, uh, on Morning View. Makes no sense.
Yeah, I don't think it'd have to run all night, and I don't know, I don't know if they'd have to be seven feet, to be honest. I mean, if you, if you build this thing, you could probably almost get it done at five. It still allows people to see. As they're coming to the parking area to see what the, what the signs say, and I don't think they have to be on all night. They could. At the, at the worst, they would go off at ten with everybody else's lights, and maybe, it depends. I mean, if you got people leaving the school, it's. It's another safety thing, but uh, definitely cannot face the street. That's agreed on that. But I don't think they have to be seven foot high either.
Well, you wanna amend it? You wanna make them five feet high and not facing?
Much more linear. Yes, I think if, if you're gonna, if we're gonna do something like that, I think five feet's way high now.
Looks as a five feet facing the school.
Yes, well.
Okay, I'll accept that amendment.
South, south, north and south, right?
That's, that's facing.
You're gonna drive up and read it in the, and when you're driving up to drop kids off, you read it. You're not reading it from the street, you're reading it from the. From the, so the sign runs north and south.
If you're not driving up ki- kids to school. I'll accept an amendment that says five feet. That closes one half hour after this, any school event is over.
I agree.
That, that, okay.
Commissioner Wetton?
Fine.
How, how long, uh, did you say after, uh?
One and a half hour after the last official event. That involves kids, that involves the school.
Okay, so the, the recommendation is, for this one is, that the electronic display should face towards the school, not towards the streets. And should not be higher than five feet, and that they are turned off a half hour after the last event in school.
Great.
Okay.
Next item.
The next one is, uh, you recommend to not allow the requested increases in the grading allowances.
Yeah, and the reason I said that is. As far as I'm concerned, they were picked out of thin air. Uh, I do not believe they covered under structure, which is most grading. I think when the CDP comes up, the planning commission is not gonna tell the school, you can't grade. They're gonna, they're gonna look at what is actually calculated, because these buildings hadn't even been designed.
Right.
Was actually calculated and needed like we do in every other hearing we have. And uh, you have a variance for whatever grading they need.
So just be, uh, be determined upon the CDP hearing?
Right. Not just, uh, approved now for ten years from now.
Okay, Mr. Macedi's got his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Macedi.
Thank you, uh. They weren't pulled out of thin air, of, of course. Um, our, our uh master plan architect. Did analyze the site and has recommended these cut and fills. Uh, however, we have the same goal, because every yard of cut and fill. Or cut or fill, I should say, costs us dollars. So we wanna reduce the grading as well. Um, our, our goal, of course, within any phase would be to balance the site. But in this case, it wasn't, it wasn't actually possible. So, um. You know, we, we do, we are committed to reducing that grading as much as we can. We have a. We have a reason to commit, uh, to reduce that grading as much as we can. Uh, but, but the recommendations in the, um, sorry, the. Numbers that we have in our uh specific plan are, are based on our mass plant, master plan architects. Um, estimates of the actual grading that will need to be done.
Is this for all four phases?
It is, it, yes. Now, the first phase, we're, we're confident about those numbers because.
But I mean, you're, you're eleven thousand, is that four phases or one phase?
I'd have, I'd have to look at the numbers, Commissioner.
But as I understand it, you haven't designed a lot of these buildings.
We've designed the first phase, which is the high school building, and so that number is real. Uh, the other numbers are our best estimates based on the master plan design.
Okay, so why, my question is. When you come for a CDP. Why wouldn't it be like any other building in Malibu? You come in and you say, here's our building, here's what we need to grade, is that okay? And then, and the planning commission goes, yeah.
Sure.
Why would you approve it ten years from when you built it? Whatever, if you wanna change your building.
I, I think I understand the, the, the question, Commissioner Maza, and, and there may be chances that we do change the building. Uh, as it stands right now, we have a master plan that we, uh, we intend to follow. And the reason that we're coming for a specific plan is so that we don't have to come back for. You know, twelve variances or however many this ends up being. So our, our goal is to establish that as part of this specific plan. Um, really at the, kind of the request or suggestion of the city. So that we don't need to come back for variances at every CDP.
Let me ask you this, if, if you come back. On phase two and decide, oh, I'm gonna move this building over here and I need an extra five hundred yards of grading. You're stuck with the eleven thousand.
Or in that case, I think we would need to come back and ask for a variance.
Well, this is why I don't understand why, out of every building ever built in Malibu. These are the only ones where ten years ahead of time, you know what your grading's gonna be and you approve it ahead of time.
Again, I wouldn't say that we know, but these are our best estimates, but. I, I don't think there are a lot of specific plans that have been adopted throughout Malibu either.
No, but I don't know if, uh, well, there, there have been. We have the civic center specific plan, we have a lot of them. We probably got five of them, but uh, none of them have come in and say. Well, we're gonna have a shopping center, uh, we don't know exactly where the buildings are gonna be, but we're gonna grade eleven thousand four hundred cubic yards.
I think, hang on, I think it given you some, somewhere, some decent numbers to start with, what they can, Kerry Upton's got. Uh, the handout, so let's, let's talk with Kerry Upton.
Okay, hello, Kerry Upton, Chief Operations Officer for the district. Uh, I apologize for not being with you for the whole meeting. Uh, we had another. Uh, uh, community meeting that I had to attend. What I'm listening to and, and, and uh, Mr. Maza keeps mentioning uh variances. Um, uh, maybe Ms. Brooks can confirm that when we met with the Coastal Commission. Uh, one of the things that they expressed was um, a, a displeasure. At the number of variances with the college approval and that college project. Which was what pushed us towards creating a specific plan for this school and for this, you know, for this project. And for all of the steps of the project, uh, is to avoid actually having to go after and have variances. Is that not correct, Ms. Brooks?
That is correct, and that was, um, discussed and as part of, um, staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Did they ever mention grading?
We had conversations around grading, yes, uh, and that was part of it, and it, to my knowledge. It, Ms. Brooks maybe can confirm this, is that that was one of the things they wanted covered. You know, we, we talked about various things, you know, the heights, the grading, other things that should be covered in the specific plan.
Okay, now, if you're, if you change your idea of what you wanna do with this school, for example. Your bond issues done pass, or it only passed with half as much money. Are you gonna come back in and get a new specific plan, just so you can get a different grading amount?
Sorry, uh. I, I think at this moment, uh, the, the purpose of the specific plan is to put our maximum uh on the table. Uh, with an expectation that if something changes, uh, like some of the conditions you just mentioned. Uh, that we would be prepared for having less than that, and as part of each CDP, we would actually describe uh less grading. If there was a substantial change, uh, that would impact or increase or make these numbers go up. Yes, I do think actually we would not need to come back to you for an amendment to the CDP. I mean, excuse me, for an amendment to the specific plan, and my understanding is that has to then go through the whole process to be amended.
Right, and this is why. I don't understand, I really don't understand how every single building in Malibu gets built with a request for grading for that specific building. And you're saying, well, we're picking a high number, so we can be below it. Um, do we have a grading plan?
Uh, we do have a grading plan, and it seems to me that, that, that this is what's unique uh, uh, about. Uh, and why a specific plan is needed is this is a multi-phase, multiple CDP process. That goes over time, and we have to appreciate that the specific plan is only allowing for. These sort of upper reaches of where we're going to have, uh, you know, these shifts or changes in institutional zoning. But it does not, you know, but we still will come back for each CDP. I, that, that's why the, the difficulty we are having. As a district is that typically, high schools, when they're being built, do not need to go through this. Part of the process with a local zoning agency. And so everything we're running up against is something that is not typical in the state. Uh, e- except for really your city and one other coastal zone city. Uh, so we're trying to make, make the best of how to do this, and that was the guidance we got on. Delivering a specific plan that gave the outer reaches of what we would need to achieve this multi-phase project. of how to do this, and that was the guidance we got on delivering a specific plan that gave the outer reaches of what we would need to achieve this multi-phase project.
And, and the reason why we're one of the only two cities is we're one of the only two cities is a hundred percent coastal. So we're not covered by the exemptions you have in all the other cities. Now, what happens if we do a site plan review and your building's in front of somebody's view? And you gotta change. And you have a site plan review, then the zoning, the grading changes, doesn't it?
That is, that is true, and as part of the CDP, that is something that, uh, you have authority to make a determination.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, it just puzzles me that we take something as simple as grading matches what you're gonna build and and I can't, I can't remember ever if any kind of institutional building in Malibu or any commercial building for that fact was denied grading privileges by the, the planning commission. I, it just mystifies me that we, we are approving something that's gonna happen in two thousand and thirty. Uh, and, and assuming it's not gonna change at all, uh, and it's not gonna block somebody's view.
Well, he's, he's saying if it does anything, it'll go less. They've given us a number to work with. I think we need to work with this number. It's the plan that we have in front of us, and if it turns out less, because God forbid, you know, everything goes way worse, then I guess that's what happens. But right now, this is what we have, and I, to me, I think we need to either the three of us agree that this will work for now, and that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna work with. So.
I have a hard time believing that proper planning should be, let's pick the highest number we can sort of justify, approve it ten years ahead of time, and leave no choice to the planning commission to change. It just mystifies me, but.
Commissioner Mazza, um, and members of the planning commission, I just wanted to reiterate what staff's recommendation is regarding the grading. Um, as is currently, uh, included in the draft specific plan, like we've been talking about, it basically provides a, um, a quantity of cut and a total quantity of field without categor- categorizing the grading as exempt versus not exempt. Um, again, the purpose of the specific plan is to establish development standards that don't comply with the current code. Um, currently, the school district doesn't know exactly how much exempt grading, uh, will be required versus not exempt. Um, it is staff's opinion that the grading would be, uh, most of it would be under structure since the, the redevelopment is cur- is proposed in this, in an area that's currently disturbed. So it's quite possible that a lot of this cut and fill grading is already under structure and exempt. Um, and we didn't feel that was warranted to provide, uh, yet another set of numbers that might not really apply. It might not, it might not result in um, a deviation from the code, and it could possibly also result in per, um, establishing some restrictions on the school district. Um, it's possible that this grading might actually restrict the amount of, um, non-exempt grading allowed.
Well, let me ask you this, if you're saying this is only cut and fill, what happens if they need export? And we, has the EIR contemplated export of eleven thousand cubic yards? And what happens if you have uh, forty thousand trucks going down Morning View? These are the kind of things that planning commissions and, and, and real life calculations figure out. If, if, if this actually says they can only cut and fill, that's a lot different than just you can do eleven thousand cubic yards of grading. And if you're saying that a lot of this is under structure and it's exempt anyway,
Well, it's possibly under structure. Those phases aren't fully designed yet. I believe the EIR did, um, analyze the export. I believe Julian Capida is online, and maybe he can um, speak to, um, any air quality, um, impacts that results.
I'm not so much worried about that. It seems to be, I'm being told that it's only cut and fill, which means you can't export. And then what happens if you can't?
Well, the conceptual grading table that's included in the draft specific plan does, um, show, um, an estimated, oh, a max amount of export, which I believe, let me pull it up. It anticipates over all four phases. Uh, let's see. Oh, you know what? I misspoke. The grading table does not account for export, just cut and fill.
This is why I think when you build a building, you, and you come in for a CDP, it's not a huge deal to say, I want six thousand cubic yards and get it right, rather than just what we're saying is, okay, they asked for this, let's approve it, but we don't know if they're cutting down a mountain or digging a hole or exporting or filling a gully. We don't know.
You, you do know, it's a school site, and they won't be doing any of that.
Oh, yeah. What, when they fill a gully if they could? Okay.
Well, if it was a basement, it would be, uh, exempt anyway, right?
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay, so where are we, Commissioner?
Yeah, let's.
It's up to Mark.
I'd say, to me, the grading, leave it alone. They, they've made their, they've made their numbers. Have them.
Uh, I, I, I don't have any way to analyze it. I, I, you know, I'm inclined to go along with it and, you know, have somebody that understands it better than me weigh in, you know, on the, on the city council.
That's a good point. I'm gonna take your advice right now. I know we're getting late, but I'm gonna take someone, got their hand raised, Mr. Norm Haney. Norm, go ahead.
I'm not sure that some of the planning commissioners understand how grading calculations are actually done. Um, if it's underneath the structure, it's not counted. On the other hand, if it's cut and fill, and it's not under the structure, it's counted twice. If you take a yard of dirt from one area and place it in another area, you've moved one yard of dirt, but the calculation is two yards. So, yeah, two yards. So, um, it, it is complicated. I'm not sure how they did their analysis. Uh, but in, in eleven thousand cubic yards is not a great, is, is not a lot of, of grading, uh, in fact, and so those are my comments.
Uh, Norm, I want to ask you a question. Have you ever seen a two hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot project estimate their grading before they had their plans done?
No, I mean, you have to have a set of plans to know what your grading is. And uh, you know, it's building a building is one thing, especially when the grading underneath the building is not counted. Okay? The plot plan, the layout, the, the, the area that's used for landscaping and parking and all of that, that is easy to calculate, and, and it should be done. If they're saying eleven thousand cubic yards of grading, and that does not include the area under the building, I think they can get pretty damn close. They can certainly get within ten percent. And grading is different, though. We have to understand. When you have one type of soil and you compact it, the, the cubic yards can be smaller than another type. You can't compact sand. So whatever it is in the ground, that's what it's gonna be when you get done compacting it. On the other hand, if you, if you have gravel or, uh, different, different shapes, sometimes you can compact those much tighter. So how do you calculate the yardage when, when, when it's that kind of a situation? You have to know what the soil is, you have to know the level of compaction. Most soil in the ground is compacted to eighty, eighty-five percent. But if you compact it to build a building on, you better get ninety-five percent. That means that means the volume that you remove after it's compacted is gonna be much less than the volume that was actually removed. The compacted volume is going to be less. So which one do you calculate? How it was in the ground or how it was after you've done compacting it in another location?
And you could actually.
So there are.
They could. Go ahead, Norm.
The, the, I'm gonna finalize this by saying, we have a professional on the commission, and it's Dennis Smith. He has grading. Um, he's an expert when it comes to grading and calculating grading, and I'd listen to Dennis. I'd listen to Dennis before I'd listen to me. That's the end of it.
Okay, so is that.
So what do you think? Dennis, what's your, what's your, uh, take?
They could, they could run in that, as he said, you could run into the point of where you may need import, because when you start compacting at ninety-five percent, you're using up a lot more material, and next thing you know is you're short. So you may end up having to bring material in to bring it to grade because of, of compaction, and you don't know what's down there. I was raised in this business to do the pre-work. I see a musto, or a guy's hand, but I, I was raised, if had been me and I was the contractor to build all this, I'd have probably a hundred test holes on this project, and I know exactly what I needed and where I was and everything. Usually budgets don't do that. People don't, don't do that. Those are my corporate days. That's how you build a master plan community, and that is, Mr. Mazza, how you come up with your numbers. So you know exactly what kind of material you've got all over the school, everywhere, by the new pool, by the e- everything, whatever they're gonna do, you have all these test holes that you know what kind of material, and you can, you can figure it from that. But I think these guys have gotten pretty close. I think they've gotten pretty close.
Without drilling a single hole?
Well, I think they've gotten pretty close without having to do that. That's not how I was taught to do it. You gotta get as much information you can, but they've got budget. You got, there's no money. I, supposedly in the state now, we got two, um, gazillion dollars. But when this was all going on, they didn't have any money to go through and do that. They took, they have good geologists that have a pretty good idea of what kind of material we have here and whatever kind of, you know, what's down there. They, they can figure that stuff out. As far as I'm concerned, they, they've come up with a number, let them have it. Let's, let's move on to the, either the next one, or we'll call it good and take a vote tonight and get out of here, because we've spoken on this. They're, they're taking a chance. They're in a specific plan. That's, they, they made their bed. They're in a specific plan. So I've, I've only built one community in a specific plan. That was the old Rancher California under the Kaiser thing, and you can't change stuff. So if they come back, it won't be that easy. They may come back, but, you know, they're, they've given us some numbers to work with, and that's, as far as I'm concerned, they, that, that's where they're at.
Well, I'll leave it all up to Mark. I think it's a, a very poor way to, uh, plan, but it's up to Mark.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll go along with, uh, Commissioner Smith. I, I, you know, just for, I, I just don't see another way to, to do it. Um.
So Commissioner Smith, the, the, the recommendation here is not to accept, uh, Commissioner Mazza's proposed change and, and leave it as?
Correct.
That's the last item, isn't it?
Uh, no, you're.
No, there's one more.
You have your public entrances, and we, I'm sure we all agree on that, one way in and one way out.
I, I have an add, though, too, or a, or a clarification, so whenever you're ready for that.
Just make sure I have the language right for, for the access. It was that, uh, the recommendation is that all pedestrian and auto access to school buildings shall be off Morning View Drive?
That is what Commissioner Mazza had, yes. So go ahead, Commissioner Wettin.
Uh, well, my add would be to eliminate parking lot F from the specific plan.
That was the purpose of my, my motion. You may not enter the property on.
Right, I figured that, but let's, I think we need to be.
Okay, I'll, I'll stick.
More clear.
Whatever, I accept that amendment.
I accept that. We're, we're in.
Okay.
We're all done. I, uh, I do need a second on the whole banana, and then we'll vote.
Yeah, let me, let me read it back. Hold on. There's parking lot F, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, Commissioner Mazza, if I have it correct, is staff's recommendation um, with the following changes. The city performs, uh, uh, with the following changes to make the following recommendations to the city council. First, that the city performs the monitoring functions required by the EIR. Second, the public works analyze the parking impacts. Third, that the dark sky ordinance apply to the whole campus, including the pool. Fourth, that the electronic displays should face towards the school, not towards the streets, should not be higher than five feet, and should be required to be turned off a half hour after the last event at school. And then finally, that all pedestrian and auto access to school buildings shall be off Morning View Drive, and parking lot F shall be, shall thus be eliminated.
On the dark sky and the pool, now, we, they, we gotta understand that if the state comes back or, or, you know, an entity comes back and tells us we have to change the lights because it's not safe, they, that has to happen.
That's in the dark sky ordinance.
Okay, all right. Uh, one other thing, hang on. Uh, Mr. Foster's got his hand up. Go ahead, Craig.
Well, we have a motion in process.
Oh, yeah.
Taking comments.
It, it's.
So I, I call the question.
Does that, so that reflected your motion, Commissioner Mazza?
Um, I just wanted to take one quick look. Um, we, we allowed the cut and fill, right? That, that was something that was already in there?
We let, we let, we let it go.
Yeah, you took it out, so there's, the, it's just, this, this staff, this, uh.
Yeah, that's my motion. That's my motion.
Trevor, to be clear, I thought, uh, Commissioner Mazza said for the Public Works Department to complete the traffic review prior to the city.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. It has to be reported to city council for them to consider. That's all reason for the thing. It's required to be, to, uh, be done.
I essentially clarify that, that, the, the motion was not, instead, what was staff's recommendation on the grading? Did staff had a recommendation about the grading? Because I think Commissioner.
Yeah. Yes, staff recommended the grading quantities be removed from the draft specific plan. But it sounds like the recommendation from the planning commission is to leave it as is.
Okay, so then, well, I'll add that, that, uh, staff's recommendation to, uh, to remove, what was it, to remove the grading?
The grading quantities for phases two through four.
For phases two to four, um, shall not be included. Okay.
Okay, so all we need is a second and a vote.
I'll second.
Okay, I call the question.
Did you, did you mean to have your hand up? Was there an issue, or it's still from before?
Sorry, I'll be taking it down. Focused on the notes here.
Okay, um, make a roll call.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Wettin?
Yes.
Nice chair, Smith, or Chair Smith tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
Now, let's take a second here. Mr. Craig, Craig Foster wants to speak. I, it's worth.
It's already passed. The hitting's over.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't cancel it. I haven't called it.
There's no other item.
I know, it doesn't want to say something. It's Craig Foster, for crying his sakes, Commissioner.
All up to George Bush couldn't talk.
Are we done, Trevor?
Uh, it, it's up to you, Commissioner Smith, that you want to recognize Mr. Mr. Foster.
I do.
We are ready to adjourn. You've now made the motion. It's been adopted.
Correct. But he's our representative for our school district. I'd like to hear from him.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, um, we, I have worked as hard as I can to make sure that the school district is on side with all the neighbors, and what I was hoping for you to call on me for, or more precisely for call on Steve Masetti for, because I don't have the authority to do it, but I very much would have liked to have withdrawn the parking lot before you guys voted it out, because it is a matter of great concern to me and to the district that we do not go forward in this process in a way that is antithetical or upsetting to our neighbors. So I was hoping that we could withdraw that before you guys took the vote, so it wouldn't have to be you guys striking it, but rather the district withdrew it upon hearing your conversations, upon hearing the public comments, et cetera.
Okay, well, Trevor could not, he withdraw it before. Uh, well, Trevor could not, he withdraw it before it goes to the city council.
Yeah, the, the, the district can just make that change, and that'll be part of the, what staff analyzes and brings to the city council. This is just the planning commission's uh recommendation based on what was proposed here. So, um, you know, they're, they're, they're considering the project as proposed here. This is not, they're not removing it because there's no CDP right here, this is just their recommendation about what is in the specific plan. So this is the pleasure of the district, the district just needs to advise the, the. Plan department that it wants to withdraw that part or whatever it wants to do, and then that will be what's considered by the city council.
Okay, because I think, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you listening to this and letting me speak. It's really important that we don't go forward with ongoing animus, even in a small part of our community. This is all of us, and it's really important that we work together, so thank you very much.
I, I would like uh personally to thank Craig for working with the citizens and doing that.
Big ten four, okay, uh, roll call to uh adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner, Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Okay.
And if you get a chance, watch Jefferson's taps video on. On there where he pays tribute to the veterans.
Oh.
Okay.
Good night.
All right.
All right.